Good morning. Let's get the meeting started. We have no labor update and no requests to speak, so we're going to adjourn into closed session, returning at 1:30. Good afternoon. I call this meeting to order. This is San Jose City Council meeting for October 8, 2013. We will start our meeting, as always, with an invocation. Councilor Rocha will introduce the indicator.
Thank you, Mayor. October is National Book Month, an annual event originated by the National Book Foundation that encourages readers of all ages to enjoy a great book. The Foundation invites readers to, and I quote, "Embark on the journey of a lifetime, travel to exotic places, mythical lands, and experience adventure beyond imagination. Or escape to another era altogether, all without luggage, tickets, a passport, or leaving home. All you need is an open mind, and an open book, of course." I've invited Jane Light here today as our indicator. Most of us know Jane Light as our former library director for the city of San Jose for 15 years, where she was instrumental in establishing the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Library and led the development of a branch library facilities master plan that resulted in 2000, that in 2000 resulted in a bond measure that funded the construction of six new libraries and the replacement of 14 branches. She is currently active in professional associations and community organizations, including the YMCA of Silicon Valley, San Jose Rotary, the San Jose Public Library Foundation, and also volunteers at the Washington School. I have asked her to join us today, and she kindly agreed. It is with great respect and admiration that I introduce Jane Light. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, member. Thank you, councilmember. Well, I'm going to read an excerpt from the poem "Ode to the Book" by Pablo Neruda. And he believed that books, ideas, poems should be not an end to themselves, but a precursor or a motivator to action. And I think that the council, as they've been preparing for meetings today, have probably been thinking about the actions they will take. No book has been able to wrap me in paper, to fill me up with typography, with heavenly imprints, or was ever able to bind my eyes. I come out of books-to-people orchards with the horse family of my song, to work the burning metals or to eat smoked beef by mountain firesides. I love adventurous books, books of forest or snow, depth or sky, but hate the spider book in which thought has laid poisonous wires to trap the juvenile encircling fly. Book, let me go. I won't go clothed in volumes; I don't come out of collected works. My poems have not eaten poems; they devour exciting happenings, feed on rough weather, and dig their food out of earth and men. I'm on my way with dust on my shoes, full of mythology, free of mythology. Send books back to their shelves; I'm going down into the streets. I learned about life from life itself. Love, I learned in a single kiss and could teach no one anything except that I have lived, with something in common among all men, when fighting with them and when saying all their say in my song. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Nice to see you back. We'll now have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. The third graders from Lynn Haven Elementary School in District 1 are going to help us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item are the Orders of the Day. We will add by Orders of the Day in a German in memory of Maria Henderson. Councilor Herrera will take that up after the Orders of the Day are approved. Any other changes to the printed agenda under Orders of the Day? We have a motion to approve the Orders of the Day. On that motion, all in favor? Opposed? None opposed? The Orders are approved. As I noted, we will adjourn this meeting in memory of Maria Henderson, resident of District 8. Councilor Herrera will have more to say.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm honored to adjourn today's council meeting in memory of Maria de la Luz Callison Henderson, a longtime D8 resident, dedicated public servant, and dear friend. Today, we're joined by Phil Henderson, Maria's husband of 18 years, and members of the Evergreen Senior Advisory Council. Thank you so much for being here today. Born in Mexico City on January 14, 1938, Maria passed away peacefully last Thursday, October 3, after a long struggle with cancer. She's survived by her loving husband, Phil Henderson, her sister Rosemary Wolf, eight of her nine children, Mary Ellen Mainville, Carmen Noakes, Charlotte Shepherd, Alex Callison, and Kathy Horton, including three of the four children she adopted upon moving to San Jose in 1967, Michael Callison, Joseph Callison, and Cecil Callison. She was predeceased by her daughter Pamela, many grandchildren and great-grandchildren. And she also leaves the people whose lives she touched throughout her 25 years working as a school liaison for the Evergreen School District, and later as a volunteer at the Evergreen Community Center and in the prayer shawl ministry at St. Francis of Assisi Parish, where she made blankets, shawls, scarves, and other knitted things for those who were sick or having difficulties. Throughout those 25 years at the school district, she helped countless young people with truancy and behavioral issues, and by getting them to finish their education, she changed their lives for the better. Her last school assignment was LEVA. She was one of those many unsung heroes, a lot of them women, who worked many, many years with our community. And for her volunteer work organizing events and lunch service for seniors at the community center, she was awarded the Volunteer of the Year Award by the Evergreen Senior Advisory Council. Maria bravely confronted her cancer with a grace that was apparent to all that came to know her. Throughout her life, she was a singer and a dancer. Even during her illness, Maria kept coming to the community center to be part of the Senior Advisory Council and events, and she kept singing in the center's choir, the Evergreen Singers. Her husband, Phil, shared that Maria should be remembered for her dancing eyes, her dancing heart, not with sadness but with joy for having known her. Remember her loving heart, her kindness; rejoice that you knew her; rejoice in her love; know that she is with the Lord; be glad for her that her earthly trials are over; be happy for her as she wanted. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Herrera. Next item is a closed session report. City Attorney.
There is no report.
We'll take up the ceremonial items. Before we get ones on the agenda, I do want to take a moment, a small ceremony to introduce Tony Tabor as the new city clerk. The council made that decision last week. Congratulations, Tony, not a stranger to us.[1710.13][1710.13](APPLAUSE). Can you say something? Give Tony a chance to say a few words.
First of all, I wanted to say that I'm honored to have been appointed the city clerk of San Jose, and I'd like to thank the council for giving me this opportunity. Years ago, I made the decision to become a city clerk out of a desire to serve the people and to make a difference in the community, and I firmly believe that a city clerk makes a difference in the community by serving as a bridge between the people and the local government. I'd also like to take this opportunity very quickly to thank the city clerk staff, which I think is one of the best teams in the city. They often work long hours and receive very little public recognition for a job well done. And in the past 10 months, which I've been the acting clerk, my staff has been both supportive and wonderful to work with, so I'm pleased that I get to continue to work with them. And finally, I'd like to thank my family who couldn't be here because they're in school, my husband Joe and my four children, Molly, Morgan, Maddie, and Lucas. It's music day, so they didn't want to miss music day. But they're going to be watching this on the computer later, because they do. And I look forward to continuing to lead the city clerk staff and to serve you and the citizens of this great city for as long as you'll have me. So thank you for this honor.[1793.44][1793.44](APPLAUSE). So, thank you for this honor.
I'd like to invite Councilwoman Constant to join me at the podium as we present a commendation to Rick Holden for 15 years of service to the community leadership program.
Sandra?
Hi.
I thought Sandra was going to come down with you. His lovely wife, Sandra, is right there in the audience. She deserves the commendation for putting up with all the stuff that this guy gets into, because let me tell you, come on down. Rick Holden has been probably one of the most influential people in the community leadership programs here in San Jose for quite a while. For those of you who don't know about the community leadership program, it's a group of people that they gather every year, about 30 people, and it's a good balance of people who come from the business world, the government world, nonprofit. All different social and service organizations come together to spend a year learning about each other and learning about the community. I had the fortunate experience of going through the program in 2003, and proud to have two of my employees going through the program this year. Rick went through, '95, was it?
Yes.
Rick went through the program in 1995, and he credits that for really putting him on the path of community service throughout San Jose. And he has been donating his time and his talent to a number of nonprofit organizations and has been running the community leadership program in an excellent manner ever since. In addition to his work in running the program, he has personally placed hundreds of people onto different nonprofit boards from all different sectors. He was instrumental in getting me to apply to and become accepted on the board of the Young Audiences of Silicon Valley and Arts Group, that I had the pleasure of being on their board for a number of years. He has brought an incredible amount of talent and passion to the field of leadership and to our community and has touched a lot of lives directly, but considerably more indirectly by the work that has been done by the people who have gone through the program that he has led. I personally have great admiration for Rick and wanted to make sure that we, as a council, take the time to commend you for all your great work. The mayor has a commendation for you, Rick, for you and your wife, because we know she's a big part of it. So, Mayor, if you can present the commendation.
So, I just want to thank you very much, the council and Councilmember Constant, for recognizing me. I've been blessed to be able to do something I love for the last 15 years, and it's even better because it's helped the community, and that means a lot to me in a lot of different ways. So, I want to thank all of you for that. And specifically, I want to thank several council members and the mayor, who've been more than generous with their time. I usually bring the class to the, to City Hall once a year, and they spend some time talking to the class. I had a high school leadership program for a long time, and they talked to that as well. So, specifically, I'd like to thank, in addition to Mayor Reed, Councilmember Constant, Colorado La Cardo, Chu, Oliverio, and Herrera, because they've helped me a lot, too. So, thank you very much for this honor. I appreciate it.
For our next item, we're proclaiming October 20th to October 26th as National Save for Retirement Week. Councilman Constant has the details.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite down members of our city staff that are joining us for this. We have, there you are, Ernest Ozevedo, Emily Hendon, Anthony Zeus, Tina Smith, and Peter Ng. Thank you all for joining us today. Since 2006, Congress has approved resolutions designating the third week in October as National Save for Retirement Week. The goal of the program is to increase awareness and increase personal financial literacy. I hope that everyone is made aware of how critical these skills are and how critical it is to start earlier than you think you need to, to save for your financial future. As we know, there's a lot of challenges facing us as we get older, the rising costs of health care, the rising costs of just cost of living, and of course, the fact that hopefully, we're all living longer and longer than we ever thought we would. We know that generally, people as a whole aren't saving as much as they should be, so we're trying to do our part to increase the awareness. We know that our employees here, in addition to the employer-sponsored plan, we have a defined contribution plan that we have a very high enrollment rate in and very active participation by our employees. We're hoping that the community joins in that and gets actively involved in saving for their own retirement. For all of you millions that are watching on the Internet livestream now, we know how you stick to your computers on Tuesdays just for this. Remember, this is an opportunity for you to reflect upon your personal finances and consider your future goals and ambitions and make a plan so that you can achieve those. So, I'm happy to present this proclamation today. Mayor, if you could give it to, I believe, Ernest? Are you? Ernest is going to accept and say a few words.
Thank you, Councilmember Constant, Mayor, and other council members. I would just point out, the Deferred Comp is a great program for employees. Employees manage their own investment, and it is represented by seven DCAC members who develop and review the investment policy and implement the provisions of the plan. Finally, we hope that both participants and nonparticipants will take time to learn about information and events to better understand about the need to take advantage of voluntary retirement savings opportunities. Thank you again for the time.
For our next item, we're going to celebrate International Walk to School Day, and we had to have a coin toss to see which councilmembers got to speak on this, because we all have schools. We all support International Walk to School Day. I know we have some representatives of some schools here, so I'd like to have those representatives come down, and I'd like to have the councilmembers come down. If you've got schools that are here, come on down and join us.
So, we've had the opportunity to talk about Walk to School Day every year for the last several years. And again, we do this as a city to bring attention and awareness to something that we used to take for granted. When I was a kid, there wasn't an option of getting a ride to school, because everybody walked or rode their bikes. Unfortunately, as a community, we've kind of gotten away from that, and we are encouraging people to take the time, and if your school that your children attend is close, to walk to school. I'm lucky that the school that my children go to is, well, they all used to go there, but they're splitting up schools now, but the one, the elementary school, is right around the corner from our home, and we've had the benefit of having the ability to walk with our children every day to school, my wife Julie and I, and pick them up every day. In fact, that's why she's not here, because she's walking to go pick up my daughter right now. It's a great way, not only to be out there and reduce the number of crazy parent drivers, which we all know, there's something that goes terribly wrong with parents' logic when they start to drive their kids. As they get closer to school, the decisions they make seem to get poorer and poorer. So, it's a lot easier to keep that clear decision-making when you're walking and you're getting that fresh air. So, it's encouraging people to walk to school. The city has a walk and roll team. We have a number of them behind us, behind me. Devin, Anna, Maureen, Ann, and Cordell are here. They work and partner with each one of our schools to make sure that they have the resources to get the awareness out to the parents and the students. We also have with us Hans Larson, the director of our city's Department of Transportation, who heads up this effort. From my part of town, we have the superintendent of the Campbell School District, Eric Andrew, Ivy Sarrett, the principal of Lynn Haven, I'm sorry, Castlemount Elementary School, and Sarah Jeline, the principal of Lynn Haven, who had all her third graders here with us just a short time ago. So, I hope that we can all encourage folks to get out and walk. On top of the health benefits, it's a great time just to catch up talking with your kids, which has an incredible benefit to them as they grow up. So, I think Rose wants to introduce the folks that are here from her district.
Well, I, um, are we going to present?
Yeah. Do you want to do that first?
Okay. You want to do mine first? Okay. Fine. Thank you, Councilmember Constant. First, I want to thank all the organizers and schools participating in the event this year, and we have several here from District 8 Evergreen, including Rialene Santiago from Montgomery Elementary School, Brenda Serrano from Valley Vista Elementary School, and Paul Pereira, representing Millbrook Elementary School, Patty Andrade from Carolyn Clark Elementary School, and student Zachary Smith, Principal Tina Choi of Cadwalader Elementary, along with Dilly Boot, Hannah and Santa Pinero, also from Cadwalader. And again, thanks to Hans Larson and the Walk and Roll Program staff in the Department of Transportation, Limso and Anna Lay, Devin Guion Chondani and Maureen Gallagher. You know, on International Walk to School Day, our community comes together to promote healthy, safe, and walkable neighborhoods. And there's some really fun events going on tomorrow, and I want to share how successful the Walk and Roll program has been throughout the entire school year and commend the schools in my district that have been very active in the program. I'm proud to say that last year, each of the five schools in Evergreen averaged 600 students in monthly Walk to School Days. Carolyn Clark is even working to establish daily walks to schools. Now, there's a challenge for everyone to meet. All those schools hosted bike rodeos to teach hands-on bike training, and 230 children participated last year. District 8 schools have established 30 walking routes, and 3,400 students attended Street Smarts safety presentations at these schools. I really enjoyed coming, going last year and being with the children at Millbrook and Carolyn Clark at last year's International Walk to School Day, and we look forward to getting out there again tomorrow. So, thanks again to our Department of Transportation, Lucille Packard, our schools, and most importantly of all, our parent champions that are the heart of the program. And now, I would like to have the mayor help me hand out some commendations to the schools that are here from District 8. Carolyn Clark? Carolyn Clark? I'm just going to take that one. Thank you so much. Thank you. Cadwalader? Cadwalader, right here. Montgomery? And, is this from this side? Is this right? Yes. Thank you. There you go. And Millbrook. Paul? Yep. Okay. And I think, yeah, and so, and the mayor, will you please present the commendation to Hans? Did we present that? I don't think we did that. Done that? Okay, Hans? I am behind. I'm catching up. And Hans, will you please say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor Reed, and members of the city council for proclaiming tomorrow International Walk to School Day. This is a special day for walking to school in San Jose, as it marks the completion of our first full year of our Walk and Roll San Jose program. And the goal of the program is not to just walk to school one day a year, but really to have children walk to school throughout the school year. Right now, we are working with 25 schools in San Jose, their students and their parents, and our goals are to identify safe walking routes, organize things like a walking school bus, and provide training on safe walking and biking to school. When we started the program, our goal was to achieve a 20% increase in walking and biking over a three-year period. And I am so pleased to report that we've exceeded our three-year goal in the first year, and we have a 28% increase after the first year in walking and biking to school. Incredible work. This translates, thank you. So, this translates into 92,000 less vehicle miles traveled, 90,000 pounds less greenhouse gas is emitted, but in more basic terms, it's less traffic congestion around our schools, increased safety, cleaner air, and more children that are physically fit and mentally ready to learn at school. The success that we've had in the first year has bred more success, and I'm pleased to report that we received another grant that will allow us to expand up to 55 schools over the next two years. And so, big thanks to all of the schools, the parents, and the children who have made the first year a great success. I wanted to, again, acknowledge our DOT staff, which I consider our walk stars, Ann, Devin, Cordell, Maureen, and Anna. And again, thanks to everybody for a successful first year of Walk and Roll San Jose, and look forward to a great day tomorrow as we celebrate with the world International Walk to School Day. Thank you.
Are there items that anybody wishes to speak on? Will take testimony on the consent calendar at this time.
Yeah, I wanted to pull items 2.2 and 2.5.
All right. Any other items? So, we'll take 2.2 and 2.5 in a minute. Comments on the other part of the consent calendar, Mr. Wall?
This is in reference to 2.3 subsection B, the Public Safety Finance and Strategic Support Committee report. I give testimony on documents that I discovered concerning the Environmental Innovation Center. Habitat for Humanity, Mr. Mayor, I don't know how this individual group can be qualified as a qualified, active, low-income community business, when they're basically an international corporation in which President Carter has been supporting for many years. I don't understand why this group has been selected under that term to fulfill the new market tax credit funding scenario that funded the EIC. With reference to Habitat for Humanity also being gifted 40 months of free rent, three years and four months of free rent, also is rather disturbing, especially when one considers documents from the Housing Department showing that Housing Department staff is actively working to try to secure a $500,000 grant from the federal government for Habitat for Humanity. I mean, we look at the use of city machinery for this group. In addition, they'll be asking for another, an additional $250,000 from council to fund their operations when the Environmental Innovation Center becomes operational. Also, when one looks at the composition of the board that governs the Environmental Innovation Center, it's comprised of city employees that have conflicts, material conflicts of interest within their specific departments. The departments are Public Works and the Housing Department and the Environmental Services Department. That should be enough to cause some of you to be concerned and investigate on your own to put a stop to this. I think this is graft and corruption and not what the new market tax credit lenders envisioned when they lented the money. Thank you.
That concludes his testimony on the bulk of the consent calendars. Is there a motion? Motion is to approve the balance of the consent calendar. On that motion, all in favor? Opposed? None opposed? That's approved. We have two items that we pulled off for discussion. The first is item 2.2. Councilor Camus?
Yeah, I wanted to thank staff for the explanation. I've sent out several questions from the public on the plastic bag man, and I the scope of what we analyzed originally, and so we are very comfortable with the analysis that was done. And we think this is, you know, just kind of more of the obstacles that have been raised in the past around the bag ban.
And you're not creating a new subsection? We're not going to be charging for the thicker plastic bags?
Correct.
You're not going to force anybody to charge for those bags?
That's correct.
Right. And again, I want to thank you for the report, and I will be supporting it because I do not support increasing the cost of the fees from 10 cents to 25 cents, and that's why I'll be supporting this.
It's my hard-working staff that made that really good staff report on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Councilmember Constant?
I just want to reiterate what I said. I guess it's been a year now since we did this, that I don't think it is appropriate for a government agency to charge a fee that a private entity gets to keep. It's a fee or a tax that goes to the agency that's requiring it, and I think that, I still think that's wrong. So I'll be voting against it just based on that principle alone.
I have a request from the public to speak on this item. We'll take that now. Don Williams?
Thank you very much. My name is Don Williams, and I'm a San Jose resident, and I actually founded a citizens' group called Stop the Bag Ban that's opposed to the bag ban. We feel it's a wrong decision, a wrong solution, I'm sorry, for just a tiny fraction of our litter problems. My main point today is you should not be considering tweaks to the bag ban based on kind of the faulty information from the analysis we did, but demanding a full and actual review of the bag ban costs and the effectiveness. I believe the bag ban should be repealed and not tweaked. I emailed all of you a rebuttal paper that pointed out serious statistical flaws as well as basic factual omissions in the November 2012 bag ban memorandum. The trash collection data used in that report was taken from different locations before and after the bag ban, and post-bag ban results showed an over 30% decrease in non-plastic bag trash as well, which demonstrates statistical skew. The post-bag ban store audits were done only at grocery stores, so yesterday we conducted the same one-hour audits at three major stores not included in the 2012 post-bag ban observations: Home Depot, Best Buy, and Walmart. We found that 57% of the people are now walking out of the store, clutching products in their hands or keeping them in their carts. 17% are purchasing bags, and only 8% are actually using reusable bags. So we asked the question, are these the results that you desire? Is this what you call success of a bag ban? So reducing the minimum charge from 25 cents to 10 cents is sort of like dropping a little bit of perfume on a dead animal so it doesn't smell quite so bad. The problem is, the bag ban law is a disaster, and the cost to the city and citizens is astronomically out of proportion with any gains that have been demonstrated. So I would like to ask for a full and impartial review of the bag ban and a true cost-benefit analysis to the city and the citizens. Thank you.
Councilmember Liccardo?
Yeah, I just want to point out, if you're going to identify Home Depot and Best Buy as the places to do surveys, you probably shouldn't expect to see reusable bags being used primarily.
Sir, we're not, this isn't a debate. It's not a back-and-forth, not a colloquy. You had your testimony. Councilmembers are entitled to their opinion, and this is a time that they get to talk. Well, apparently, nobody else wants to talk, so maybe we could have a motion. Motion is to approve, this is the adoption of the ordinance. On the motion, all in favor. Opposed? Count one opposed. Councilmember Constant, that does pass. Taking us to item 2.5, the travel report. Councilmember Camus and I were both on a trip together last week to Washington, D.C. and Councilmember Camus wants to report on that. I'll let him do the talking, or I'm happy to give the update. Well, let me start off, and then Councilmember Camus can add anything he wishes to add because we were on different teams, different places, talking to different people. It was part of the Silicon Valley Leadership Group trip, what used to be an annual trip is now four times a year. This one was focused primarily on a few topics: immigration reform and business tax reform. Immigration reform, obviously, is something this council's taken positions on, and so there were a total of about 70 meetings with members of Congress. Councilmember Camus and I were on different teams, so we didn't participate in all of them with all the people because there were multiple teams. But we did speak with members of our own delegation, but mostly it was people in swing districts on immigration reform. And we had previously asked our members of Congress what we could do to help on the immigration reform effort, consistent with the council direction and council policy. And routinely, they would say, you got to talk to those others, the people that are in districts where it's difficult for them to make a decision because they need to hear from people outside of their district, like Silicon Valley Leadership Group companies. And so that was the reason that we met with a lot of people. Of course, we also met with the House leadership, both Republican and Democrat, on the topic of immigration reform and business tax reform, as well as how can we keep the federal government open, or in this case, get it back open again. We had some side visits. I met with U.S. Patent and Trademark Office staff, which was also a topic of conversation in some of the visits with members of Congress. Because, as you know, the Congress has authorized the branch office, four branch offices of the U.S. Patent and Trademark Office, and one of those is to be in Silicon Valley. They were in the middle of trying to identify the location for their office when they got sequestered and had to stop that process. And since then, we've had the shutdown, and so they're trying to decide what to do, whether to do it on a temporary basis or just wait out the sequester in hopes that they can restart. There are bills that are pending in both the Senate and in the House to allow the Patent and Trademark Office branches to go ahead because they're funded by fees, not by general revenues, but those bills aren't moving. So we had an interesting conversation with them, trying to figure out how to help them solve their problems. I think we made good progress on that. We don't know exactly where they want to put their office because that's a process they do through the GSA, but on a temporary basis, we certainly could accommodate their needs in San Jose and in city hall space. I also met with the Coalition of Organizations that are working on getting the IRS to issue private letter rulings to facilitate employees having a choice of benefits in defined benefit plans. That's moving ahead, although slowly, also slowed down by shutdown and other things. But Coalition, we had a meeting with our outside council and accomplished quite a bit during that meeting towards moving on that goal, specifically for the benefit of City of San Jose. So with that, there was a lot more, many, many days of, many hours, over several days of meetings. Councilmember Camus might have some additional things that happened that I didn't participate in that he wants to add, and it's up to him if he wants to add.
Yeah, I actually wanted to thank the Silicon Valley Leadership Group for their great organizational skills. They pretty much planned every minute of our day. It was as soon as we got off the plane, and we did, I mean, 70 members in one and a half days. It was a difficult task to get through, but I was heartened. We were talking about immigration reform, business tax reform, and the patent office to be located in, and actually, me and the mayor lobbied for it to be located in the city of San Jose, but we just wanted to get it off the sequester list and make it a reality as soon as possible. And I was heartened to see some movement from both Republican and Democratic members of the House. I was delighted to see a lot of agreement, even on immigration reform and tax reform, again, both from Republicans and Democrats. And I was delighted to actually get into a debate with three CEOs that are located in the city of San Francisco to tell them why it's better to be located in the city of San Jose. So I actually had a really good, a good back-and-forth discussion with a couple of CEOs, and I think we had, I had a very good meeting. This was my first attempt at lobbying, and I really feel like it was to the benefit of the citizens of the city of San Jose and in general for the country. So I, again, thank you for putting this trip together for the Silicon Valley Leadership Group, and I enjoyed it.
That concludes the trip report unless someone else has a report. All right, let's move on then to item 3.1, report of the city manager.
Mr. Mayor, I have no report today.
Then let's take up item 3.3, the city manager's annual report. We'll let our staff come down.
And Mayor, I will kick this one off as the staff is assembling. The annual report is established by the city's charter as the city manager's vehicle for summarizing and analyzing the financial performance of the city for the preceding fiscal year, and it's really in the spirit that I wanted to make a few comments, given the significance of this report, and to highlight some of the key takeaways that I think Jennifer will certainly cover in more detail in her presentation. 2012-13 marked a turning point for the city as it was the first year in a decade where we did not have to resolve a general fund shortfall and we began to stabilize the budget. As you all are painfully aware, this stability was hard to achieve, requiring many difficult service cuts and sacrifices by our community and our employees over many years that has taken for us to get to this point. So as we close out 12-13, the city's continued careful management of its over 100 funds allowed us to end the year in what I would call a stable position, with these funds generally performing as expected. In the general fund, we ended the year with a very small amount of additional fund balance, and our estimates were in, were within 0.2% of the 12-13 budget. This is a welcomed and yet extremely small margin, and reflects a very close monitoring of both revenues and expenditures during the year to estimate with this level of precision. As the city's budget continues to stabilize, we are building a stronger foundation for moving forward. This report helps to confirm that the city is on the right track fiscally and that we must continue our prudent fiscal management and continue to pursue implementation of the remaining elements of the fiscal reform plan in order to allow the city to strengthen the organization and rebuild the services to the community. And in closing, and before turning it to Jennifer, I would just like to thank all the departments and their staffs, as well as our budget office, for their prudent management in helping us to get to this point. Jennifer?
Thank you, Deborah. Good afternoon, Jennifer Maguire, Budget Director. I am pleased to present to you with a very brief overview of the city's 2012-2013 annual report. It is a pretty thick document, so this will just hit the highlights. Throughout the report, you will find a technical comparison of budget to actual revenues and expenditures in each budgeted fund for last year, and as appropriate, explanations concerning material differences between these amounts. The annual report also provides the city council with a comparison of estimated to actual any fund balance amounts for all funds, as well as a summary of the 2012-2013 year-end reserves by fund. As I'll briefly describe in my presentation today, a number of 13-14 budget adjustments are also recommended in the annual report for city council consideration, based on both the closeout of the 2012-2013 fiscal year and based on updated current year budget information. I am happy to say that on an overall basis, consistent with past years, the city ended the year as expected due to prudent budgeting and very active monitoring and management of our over 100 city funds throughout the fiscal year. As a year-end review, as the city manager mentioned, 2012-2013 marked the first year in a decade where the city council had the distinct pleasure of allocating a very small general fund budget surplus. This was a turning point for the organization after, during 10 years of budget shortfalls that totaled $680 million and necessitated significant service and employee compensation reductions, as well as the elimination of over 2,000 positions citywide. With the city council's approval of the 2012-2013 budget, services that had been funded on a one-time basis in the prior year were continued, four new libraries and one new community center that were constructed with general obligation bonds were able to be opened. The most immediate and critical of the city's unmet and deferred infrastructure needs were addressed. A small number of essential needs to strengthen the organization were added. A limited number of new programs and initiatives that were approved by the city council through the mayor's March and June budget messages were funded, and more effective service delivery models were implemented in a number of areas. As the economy continued its recovery this last year, as anticipated, the city did experience improved growth in our economically sensitive revenues, such as property tax, sales tax, transient occupancy tax, our development fee programs, and the development and real estate-related taxes. Although a number of our revenues are now exceeding pre-recession levels that were seen in 2007, 2008, it's important to know that the majority of our major revenue sources are still below recent peak collection levels. On the expenditure side, performance in 2012-2013 also met expectations. Overall expenditures were within or below approved levels in all funds. As a result of our careful management, the general fund again ended the year with a very small additional fund balance. As I'll describe in a few minutes, actions are recommended in the annual report to allocate this additional fund balance to close out the 12-13 fiscal year and to help address a few urgent funding needs. For the rest of the city funds, all special and capital funds ended positive, most with fund balances at or above estimated year-end levels. The city's budget, again, as the city manager mentioned, is relatively stable at this point, but prudent fiscal management will continue to be necessary to keep the city on course. Implementation of the remaining elements of our fiscal reform plan, including retirement reform and revenue measures, continue to be important to rebuild the organization as well as the services to help meet the levels that are more acceptable to our community. As I mentioned on the previous slide, the general fund did end the year with a small additional fund balance. In fact, the general fund ended the year with a fund balance of $215.2 million, which was 2.2 million or 0.1% above the $213 million estimate used to develop the 13-14 adopted budget. After you factor out the dollars owed back to the development fee program reserves and the true-ups of our rebudgeted projects and other recommended cleanup adjustments, the variance was really at the $4.8 million level, or 0.2% of the total budget. The additional $4.8 million in fund balance was generated from excess revenue and expenditure savings that each approximately totaled about $2.6 million. I don't know how that happened, but it did. This was partially offset by a slightly lower-than-estimated amount of encumbrance liquidations from the prior year. As I mentioned in the first slide, the improvement in the economy has led to continued growth in the city's economically sensitive revenues. This slide shows the performance in some of these revenues, comparing 2012-2013 actual collections with prior-year receipts, as well as to the recent peak and low collection points. Because this slide is hard to read, most of this information can be found on page eight of the city manager's transmittal memorandum in the annual report document. All of the revenue categories shown on this slide experienced growth from 11-12 to 12-13, and most have had very large increases in collections from the recent low points. With the exception of the development fee program, however, all of these revenue categories remain below the recent peak collection levels. With this slide, I also wanted to point out that it illustrates the large swings in some of these key revenue sources in recent years, which has made it more difficult to balance the budget each year, and in some cases, has required adjustments during the year to account for changes in our revenue collections. The next few slides show the administration's recommended allocation of the additional fund balance in the general fund, as well as other recommended 2013-2014 adjustments. Starting again with that 2.2 million ending fund balance variance, as I discussed earlier, we are recommending cleanup actions totaling $2.7 million that will provide additional funding, which will bring what we consider to be the true fund balance available to $4.8 million. There are two categories of cleanup actions. First, again, is our development fee program reconciliations totaling about $4 million. These serve to true-up our actual program costs with actual revenues for the building, planning, public works, and fire- remain below the recent peak collection levels. With this slide, I also wanted to point out that it illustrates the large swings in some of these key revenue sources in recent years, which has made it more difficult to balance the budget each year, in some cases has required adjustments during the year to account for changes in our revenue collections. The next few slides show the administration's recommended allocation of the additional fund balance in the general fund, as well as other recommended 2013-2014 adjustments. Starting again with that 2.2 million ending fund balance variance, as I discussed earlier, we are recommending cleanup actions totaling 2.7 million that will provide additional funding, which will bring what we consider to be the true fund balance available to $4.8 million. There are two categories of cleanup actions. First, again, is our development fee program reconciliations totaling about $4 million. These serve to true-up our actual program costs with actual revenues for the building, planning, public works, and fire development fee programs, and places any of this extra funding into their dedicated reserves. The second category is what we call our re-budgets or other cleanup adjustments, and that totaled $6.7 million. This is recommend, this category recommends to complete existing projects in 13-14 that were previously approved by the City Council, and to reflect any necessary technical budget adjustments to follow City Council direction or reflect pre-approved agreements. The largest adjustment we are recommending is the recognition of $10.3 million in a reimbursement from the successor agency to the redevelopment agency, or SARAH, that was budgeted to be received in 12-13, but is now expected to be received in 13-14. So it's just we're switching the money between the two fiscal years. After the cleanup adjustments, there are a number of recommended budget adjustments that will allocate all of the $4.8 million additional fund balance, as well as implement other necessary budget actions. The three categories that we're reflecting these actions in are, first called the Required Technical Rebalancing Actions, which actually will generate net additional funding of $3.3 million. We have our Grants, Reimbursements, and Fee Activities category, which results in $2 million in net zero adjustments, which I'll describe in a minute. And then our third category is called our Urgent Fiscal Program Needs category, which totals $8.1 million, and requires all of the $4.8 million additional fund balance and the net additional funding that is generated from the Required Technical Rebalancing Actions of $3.3 million. In the, in the category of Required Technical Rebalancing Actions, $3.3 million in net additional funding is expected to be generated from the actions listed on this slide. The first recommended item reflects an upward adjustment to our 13-14 sales tax estimate of $2.4 million to reflect actual third and fourth quarter 2012-2013 performance with a 3% growth factor applied. The second adjustment decreases our salaries and benefits reserve by $2.3 million to reflect health and dental savings based on actual health and dental rates that will be implemented in January 2014. The health rates went up 1% compared to the budgeted estimate of 11%. I don't think I've seen that really happen too much in the past, and we do have sufficient departmental vacancy savings to absorb that little additional increase. Our dental rates had no increase compared to a budget estimate of 2%. The Retirement Contributions reconciliation that is now completed annually as part of the annual report process to ensure we are paying the city's annual required retirement contributions for the city's two retirement plans, results in a net cost of $820,000 to the general fund. This action will bring total retirement costs to $211.4 million in the general fund and $271.2 million in all funds in 13-14, representing growth of 13.5% in the general fund and about 14% year-over-year compared to last year's levels. The next action is a $420,000 decrease to the Airport Maintenance and Operations Fund overhead reimbursement that is necessary as a result of a provision in the airline-airport lease operating agreements approved by the City Council in March 2007. This provision requires a reduction in overhead charges if the percentage growth in annual employments at the airport exceeds the forecasted growth nationwide. This is the first time this provision has had to be triggered, with the airport experiencing a 2.7% year-over-year growth compared to a national flat growth, or just a flat growth projection in 12-13. Funding of $218,000 is recommended to be added to fund business incentives for Maxim Integrated Products, a business cooperation program, and administrative costs related to the business cooperation program. These incentives have been previously approved by the City Council, but unfortunately, they were inadvertently not accounted for in the adopted budget. We also have two small miscellaneous adjustments generating net funding of $19,000. With no impact to the general fund, the administration is also recommending four other adjustments, as you can see on the slide. The Retiree Healthcare Contributions Reconciliation Action allocates savings of $3.9 million in the general fund, actually $7 million in all funds, into a retiree healthcare solutions earmarked reserve to reflect an extension of the phase-in to fully fund the annual required contributions for retiree healthcare benefits by 18 months, as agreed to with our employee groups in the Federated Retirement System, and is approved by the City Council last June. The Salary Program Adjustments allocates our Employee Compensation Planning Reserves to Department Budgets, which totals $3.5 million in the general fund and $5.2 million in all funds, to reflect 2% salary increases that have been negotiated and agreed to with five of our bargaining units, including MEF, CEO, AMSP, Camp, and ALP, as well as Unit 99. As approved in the adopted budget, City Hall Debt Refunding Savings of $7.7 million net in the general fund is recommended to be used to pay down a portion of the $55 million Hayes Mansion Phase II debt principal. This will allow the city to pay down the debt two years earlier, realize average annual savings of $345,000, and achieve total savings of $4 million through the year 2025. And finally, to maintain the general fund contingency reserve at the City Council's minimum 3% of the operating budget policy, a net zero transfer of $1.7 million in funding from the 2014-2015 Future Deficit Reserve to the contingency reserve is recommended as part of this report. A series of net zero adjustments totaling $2 million, as I mentioned earlier, are recommended in the report to reflect new or updated revenues and expenditures for grants, reimbursements, and/or fee activities. The largest adjustments are for activities associated with our Parks, Recreation, and Neighborhood Services totaling $1.2 million, primarily for senior nutrition and after-school education and safety programs. Recommendations for the Police Department total approximately $400,000, include grants related to traffic enforcement, and SVRIA computer-aided dispatch interface, and sobriety As I mentioned earlier, using the additional fund balance of $4.8 million combined with the resources generated from the recommended budget adjustments of $3.3 million, a total of $8.1 million is proposed to fund a few urgent fiscal program needs. In coordination with the City Attorney's Office, by far the largest adjustment the administration is recommending is a $6.5 million increase to our General Liability Claims appropriation, bringing that appropriation to a total to $14.4 million in the current year. This increase will provide sufficient funding for a recent $5 million settlement agreement and a $1 million judgment against the city, as well as for other judgments and potential claims and litigation settlements this year. The second action is an increase to the SARAH Legal Obligation Subsidy of $2.2 million. It will bring our subsidy in the general fund from $850,000 to $3.1 million in the current year, to reflect revised successor agency cash flows and structural deficits in the current year. This is primarily due to the county's continued withholding of tax increment funding related to the PERS and Water District levies, that is mostly offset, though, by improvements in overall tax increment growth levels, and otherwise, we would have had the cash flow a lot more over to them. This funding is needed by SARAH to ensure sufficient funding for city contractually obligated payments. The next action increases the San Jose Police Officers Association Employee Compensation Planning Reserve by $1.1 million from $10 million to $11.1 million, to ensure that sufficient funds are set aside if a negotiated settlement with the PA, POA were to occur. Based on the city's most recent offer and negotiations included in this reserve is funding equivalent to a 3% ongoing general wage increase in 13-14 as part of a one-year agreement. That would give us total one-year funding of $6.5 million towards the POA, or it will fund a 2.5% ongoing general wage increase in both 13-14 and 14-15, as well as a one-time 4% non-pensionable retention bonus as part of a two-year agreement, which would be total two-year funding of about $15.5 million. Funding of $250,000 is recommended for Police Department Community Service Officer vehicles, and will allow for the purchase of 14 additional vehicles for the 21 new CSOs that were added in the adopted budget. Based on a patrol officer deployment model, funding for seven vehicles were funded in the current year's budget. However, after further analysis by the Police Department, it's been determined that for more effective coverage and service to the community, the CSOs will now be deployed on a Monday-through-Friday basis, eight-hour days, that will require each position to have its own vehicle. Because the vehicles' purchases and the buildups take several months to complete, we're recommending that the council consider funding this now, so these vehicles are ready to go when the CSOs complete their training later this fiscal year. A $2 million reduction to the Successor Agency Legal Obligations Reserve, which will bring that reserve from $10 million to $8 million, is recommended to offset the majority of the increase to the SARAH Legal Obligation Subsidy, as I discussed just a few minutes ago. This reserve is intended to provide the equivalent principal value of loans made between the city and former redevelopment agency as part of the CREF loan from three city funds that is currently due and payable this June 30, 2015. To the extent possible, if we can get some reimbursements back to SARAH later this year, the administration will seek to replenish this reserve, so it's back at its $10 million level. The last recommended increase is to the Police Department's overtime budget, increasing it by a total of $2.2 million through a $1.5 million reallocation of vacancy savings in the current year and a $750,000 re-budget of savings realized last year. This increase will bring the overtime budget to $18.1 million, which is approximately equivalent to what the Police Department spent on overtime expenditures last year. The funding will provide operational flexibility to the department as they continue to work through filling their vacant positions, increasing their street-ready patrol strength. Moving on to the performance of our selected special and capital funds, we picked out just a few funds to discuss. For the airport, the airport served 8.49 million passengers in 12-13, which was an overall increase of 2.8% year-over-year. The operating funds finished with a $5.8 million excess fund balance compared to the levels that were assumed in the development of the adopted budget due to conservative budgeting and active budget management by the airport. In our Transient Occupancy Tax Fund, revenues of $15.2 million, we're at the 12-13 modified budget level, and we're 11% above the prior-year actual level. The strong revenue performance in 12-13 is reflected in the increase in the average occupancy rate for the city's 14 largest hotels, climbing from about 62% to 67%, combined with a $10 average increase in room rates for the same set of hotels. So the average room rate went from $129 to $139. In our Convention and Cultural Affairs Fund, there was, again, solid performance there as well. Revenues and expenditures in this fund were above prior-year levels, primarily due to increases in operating activities. After re-budgets, the fund ended the year with a small additional fund balance, and with a few recommended budget changes in the annual report, the balance in the fund will remain at approximately the level that was approved by the council as part of the adopted budget. In the utility funds, progress continued on capital investments in the water pollution control plant, the sanitary and storm sewer systems, and the water utility system. As councils were as aware, there were delays in the Environmental Innovation Center project in the Integrated Waste Management Fund, and there were several position vacancies last year that created operational challenges for the department, particularly for the water pollution control plant. In each of these funds, the any fund balance was above the estimate used in the development of the 13-14 adopted budget. In the special and capital funds, like the general fund, there is a series of recommended actions in the annual report, as noted on the slide and explained in detail in the document. I'm not going to go through those in detail, but there's plenty of pages worth of them. But basically, we are doing fund balance reconciliations, also treeing up re-budgets, doing that same retirement contributions reconciliation, accounting for City Hall debt refunding, so there will be a return to many funds for that portion of the savings on the, on the City Hall debt service. We have technical adjustments, we're recognizing some new grants and reimbursements, establishing a limited number of new projects. The annual report does include one final recommendation, which is the release of the SARAH PERS levy, Water District levy, general fund contingency plan that was included in the 13-14 adopted budget. The administration believes that this contingency plan, which has required $13 million in important projects and programs to be on hold in the current year, is no longer necessary once the SARAH subsidy is increased by the $2.2 million as recommended in the annual report and as I discussed on the earlier slide. Based on the information we have in hand, no more increases to the SARAH subsidy are anticipated this year. But if for any reason we receive information to the contrary, which is always possible, there will be $8 million remaining in the Successor Agency Legal Obligations Reserve to cover any obligations if necessary. The release of the contingency plan will enable projects included in the adopted budget to move forward, such as a lot of projects in our police administration and communications building related to unmet deferred infrastructure and maintenance. We can start moving forward on the replacement of our operating and capital budget system. The reserve will be released, it's a 14-15 reserve for our homeless response team, so that will be secure. We've, we can move forward more with our preventative maintenance program, we have upgrades for our computer server and network, and you can see some of the other items on the slide. The complete plan list can be found on page 32 of the City Manager's Transmittal Memorandum in the annual report. I did want to note, however, that the $20 million general fund contingency plan associated with the SRBR elimination and the lowest-cost healthcare plan changes will remain in effect. We don't expect any information that would enable us to release that plan until January 2014 at the earliest. In closing, as we move forward, the slide shows the major next steps related to monitoring and tracking of the current year budget, as well as the initial steps for the preparation of the upcoming 2014-2015 budget process, and we're starting to think about that already. With that, I will stop here for questions or comments, and we have staff available as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just start by acknowledging the really good work that's been done by the staff, and that is a lot of people, and the various offices that have to get together everything for an annual report. And it's always interesting to see how close the staff is able to come to the projections, given the fact there are so many variables moving in so many different directions, that coming within plus or minus 1% is amazing, and they're usually plus or minus point-something of 1%. That obviously takes a lot of skill and a lot of hard work, and so we, as a council, thank you for that, because we have a pretty good idea that we're going to end up where we think we're going, as long as we let you drive. And it's, sometimes it's tempted for us to take over the wheel, but you've been doing a pretty good job of getting us to where we tell you to go, and I just wanted to acknowledge that. I do have a couple of questions. First is, well, we have money left over, so to speak. Most of it's committed, and we're carrying it over because we've got projects to finish. But we are carrying over some money to spend in the following year, if I got it right. So we have the Future Deficit Reserve of $13.7 million, which is because we think we're going to have a gap in the following fiscal year. So that's part of the money that we're carrying over, is that correct?
It was $13.7, but with the recommendations of us reallocating $1.7 million of it towards the contingency reserve, it will be left at $12 million. As we reported at the beginning of September at the revenue study session, because we ended up with a little bit of extra property tax, the revision for the deficit, if we need the contingency, the $20 million contingency plan, is closer to $11 million. So it still would provide a little bit of a buffer for the City Council in preparation of the budget next year.
Okay, well, it's always good going into the budget with a little bit of cushion. Sort of a new funding source, I just wanted to point out, and thank staff for being creative and trying to come up with money, and that's a report on page 17, and that's the Business Cooperation Program, where we get what's due us under use taxes by working with businesses, $400,000, and I know that staff continues to work on that, to try to increase that number. But that's $400,000 that we didn't have in the past, and it's good to have additional revenue sources. And then I want you to go back to the reserve for the San Jose Police Officers Employee Compensation Planning Reserve, page 21. We have money that we've set aside that's based on the offers that we have put on the table in our negotiations with the Police Officers Association. If we don't get contracts, and we don't have a contract yet, I think the POA is currently voting on one of our two proposals, that they're taking to the membership for a vote. That vote's supposed to be completed tomorrow. If we get an agreement on a contract, we have the money already set aside to spend.
Correct. So you've got the money set aside for either a, so for either scenario, for the one-year settlement or a two-year settlement, because the, the second year, we've captured, when we did the adopted budget, as part of the, as part of the balancing of the 13-14 adopted budget and into our forecast.
And then I'm not sure I understand the distinction here. So we have $11.1 million set aside, but we might need a total of two-year funding of $15.5. So does that mean we have a gap there that we're going to have to cover between now and next year?
Well, the $15.5 million, when we were balancing the budget, and what, when we balanced the 13-14 adopted budget, we considered the $15.5 million when we were balancing between one-time and ongoing, so the $15.5 million has been considered to have no further impact on the budget, because we've taken it into account into our balancing actions, so it doesn't have any, it doesn't drive our deficit into any further hole into, when we start balancing 14-15, because it's been considered, when I've, when I've told- been considered, when I've told the council that we have a $10.9 million potential deficit in 1415, that 15.5 million is taken into account in that number. If we don't need the 20 million contingency reserve, that number was about 5 million of a deficit. And that still has a 2% employee compensation planning reserve for all other employee groups as well accounted for.
All right. So, we have $11 million that we've put on the table in one form of our two offers that we could use if we get contracts. I guess my question is, if we don't get a contract, what happens with that money, and what can we do with it? And can we, since we have the money, this, I guess, is a question for the city attorney, can we just give the money to the officers without a contract, or is it all hinge upon a contract?
It hinges upon a contract. As you know, the two ways of getting money with the bargaining group, the POA specifically, is through a negotiated contract or through arbitration. You've already gone down the arbitration route, and no amount was awarded or could be awarded. And so, without an agreement, the council doesn't have the ability to impose as it does with the other bargaining groups.
So, we have the $11 million. We can't impose, and if we don't get a contract, the money sits in this reserve until when?
It'll sit in the reserve until the council decides to do something else with it. So, the administration, you know, would bring it forward as either a rebudget to the following year, but we will look to the city council for direction of how you would like us to handle that reserve. But it is set aside, and it can't be spent without further city council action.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to tackle the mayor's thanks to the staff in the city manager's office, as well as in the budget office, for another very thoughtful, comprehensive, and detailed annual report. Just a couple of general questions. I think it's great that the unemployment rate in San Jose has dropped from 8.8 in 2012 to 6.9 for this year. I was just wondering if staff can speak to or point to, was there anything that we did right in terms of providing more business incentives to corporations, to entice them to open here in San Jose, to create more jobs for our residents? Was there any specific factors that we did, or is this just an overall trend in the economy that is slowly improving here in Silicon Valley?
I'm the Economic Development Director, and of course, we're doing everything right here in San Jose, so we are capturing job growth that, of course, is correlated to the recovery in the Bay Area. And the Bay Area and San Jose area in particular have consistently been the strongest areas for job growth in the nation.
Right. And I just wanted to give staff an opportunity to actually state that out loud. I know that the Office of Economic Development is doing a great job. As the mayor alluded to, the business cooperation program, where we're actually offering up to 30% of the local portions of the use tax for some of the companies to open here, and I think Samsung actually took advantage of that. Are there other companies or corporations that are taking advantage of that opportunity?
Yeah, thank you. So, this is a real innovation, and it's really just the beginning of us using this tool in the future. So, as we talk about the potential for several million more square feet of construction in North San Jose, it's our intent that we'll work with those companies to ensure that they participate in that business cooperation program, because it's great for the city and it's great for the company also. So, it's a double incentive.
Thank you, Kim. And then, I think I'm done with the economic development factor. I just want to ask Hans Larson, the director of DOT, questions about the pavement maintenance portion of our overall budget for DOT. It states here on page 29 that of the $62.5 million, the majority of the money went to the pavement maintenance projects, which is, it's good, because one of the common complaints that we hear from residents is that their neighborhood streets are just in poor conditions. And recently, we also heard the news that San Jose has one of the worst roads in the nation. So, it's great to see a big portion of this money going toward pavement maintenance. But my question is, what is the cost associated with adding additional streets to the priority network? I know that at some point, we were discussing about an upward amount of $100 million in order to bring our neighborhood streets up to the standard. And if we don't have the money, what can we do to make sure that we continue to fix or improve our roads in our city?
That's a big question, a lot to that. Yes, clearly, we don't have enough money to properly maintain our streets, and kind of mentioned, we only have about 20% of the funds that we need. We should be spending about $100 million a year. We have approximately $20 million, I think with the budget the council approved, there was a little bit of an increase, so I think we're about $20, $23 million a year that we have. So, we're, as council decided, we're putting that money towards the streets that are most important to the San Jose community. Those are the streets that people drive on the most, which we define as a priority street network. But it is not, it's not all of the major streets in San Jose, it's only about half of them. And so, we should be adding another, I think, $16 or $18 million a year to cover all of the major streets in San Jose. And to the point that you made in terms of the complaints that we're getting from our neighborhoods, is we have no money programmed for neighborhood street maintenance. That's about 2/3 of our streets. We don't have any resources to cover that. So, there is a very strong effort at the region-state, probably not the federal level, but to try to get more investment in transportation. I think we'll continue to look at that. I know the council's direct us to do some polling with the community, to see if they're interested in funding more money for pavement maintenance, and we'll be back to council later this calendar year with the results of those polls and help facilitate some policy direction. You're interested in job creation, putting money into infrastructure, and particularly pavement maintenance, has been touted as a way to create jobs real quickly, particularly in the sectors that have a higher unemployment rate. So, not only if we can get some more investment in pavement maintenance, we improve the quality of our streets and neighborhoods, but also help promote more jobs here in San Jose.
Thank you very much, Hans. And obviously, this is a major issue that residents are very concerned with, so I look forward to hearing back from staff at some point after they conducted the poll, to see if residents are willing to support a potential bond measure, so that we can put more money toward providing maintenance for our roads and the streets here in our city. So, that concludes my comment. Thank you very much again for staff.
Councilor Colra.
Thank you, Mayor. Jennifer, thank you for the report and presentation, and on some of the, some of the comments you made on some of the slides, it talks about the budget and the cleanup adjustments, and there were some that talked about other kind of adjustments that were made, and there was a number of different line items on a couple of the different slides that showed zero, a zero in terms of impact on general fund, because the money was coming from another source, or was sliding from one source into another fund. So, I think six and eight, at least, we can try six, yeah, six and seven, there's all these zeros there, that show no impact on the general fund, which very well may be true, but are some or all, or some of those funds at least, funds that would otherwise be unrestricted? In other words, they could go to the general fund, but the direction and recommendation from your office, from the city manager through your office, is to have it go into these different debts and liabilities?
Well, in the case of several of these, like the retiree health care contributions reconciliation, that's actually just moving money between appropriations in the general fund. So, we're taking the money out of the departments, their personal services appropriations, and putting it into a retiree health care solutions reserve per previous council direction. The salary program, same thing. It's taking it from that earmarked reserve for employee compensation planning increases that the council approved. We're taking it out of the reserve, and we're distributing it to the department, so they're funded to give all those 2% increases with the employee groups. The City Hall debt refunding, one is a little bit different. That one was a recommendation as part of the adopted budget, or the proposed budget that the council approved when we adopted the budget, which took some one-time savings that the general fund would have paid for City Hall debt service, and redirected it to pay down debt at the Hayes Mansion to produce ongoing savings. So, we took a one-time source of money and produced ongoing savings with that. So, that was something that the city council approved as part of the adopted budget. So, that is moving within funds, between other funds. And then, again, the contingency reserve recommendation has a zero, is moving from one reserve, the future deficit reserve, to another reserve within the same general fund. So, that's, they're important policy decisions, because, you know, that the council has either previously directed us to do, that, you know, we want to show on here, because they are moving money around within the general fund, which, of course, the whole budget is the city council's decision, so that's why they're noted here. But all those things have been previously approved by the city council in other forums. So, that's why they're called a required technical or rebalancing action.
And can you go to the next two slides, one by one? So, slide seven?
Sure.
And...
So, these, this one, number seven, is we're recognizing revenue from outside granting agencies, so we're, and then we're using that money for the associated grant. Instead of putting these on a bunch of different council agendas, we've gathered a whole bunch of different grants that have come along since the adoption of the budget, and we're recommending that the council, like, approve, you know, increasing revenue we'll receive for our senior nutrition program specifically, and then, you know, put into the senior nutrition program appropriations for that particular activity. So, these are related to grants or reimbursements for a particular activity.
And those are grants specific to these programs?
Specific to these programs, there's no discretion on those monies. And then, the last one, this is, this is the administration's recommendation on areas that have not been necessarily previously approved by the city council. So, this is what we're calling an urgent fiscal program need. So, it would be the city council's, you know, obviously, policy decision to increase the general liability claims, $6.5 million. The city council has just approved some awards, some settlement agreements that totaled $6 million within the last several months. And it's with working with the attorney's office, we do not believe there's enough money in that appropriation to pay that. We do have a reserve for general liability claims, along with workers' compensation claims, but it's very small. If we had a catastrophic claim, it's $15 million, and we have other judgments and things that might come along this year, and working with the attorney's office, that we believe that would be prudent to put into that appropriation. There is, there'll be left over in that appropriation, $8 million approximately, I'm rounding the numbers, and we know that there is, there was a settlement that we brought forward to you last fiscal year related to a case in North San Jose that, right now, is sitting at $6 million. So, there's not a lot of room in that appropriation, where several years ago, it was, and we were kind of living off of carrying over money. That's just not possible anymore, and we've needed to add money into the appropriation the last couple of years. Hopefully, that won't be the case in the future, but it's really hard to know on these type of actions. But again, some of these other actions, the San Jose Police Officers Association Employee Compensation Planner Reserve, that has been authorized to give that offer to this POA. The vehicles are something we're recommending, things like that.
What about the overtime, police overtime, the $1.5 million personal?
Yeah, that is, you know, that is something that the administration's recommending to give the department flexibility on their deployment, so they can do more targeted enforcement. They've asked for an increase to that appropriation, so that they don't have to limit, limit the cash versus comp time as much as they feel like they'll have to do to the police officers based on their contract with the POA. So, it's providing a little bit more cash, so they can pay more cash out for the overtime that they feel is required to patrol the city. So, that's, again, bringing our overtime expenditures to about the $18 million level that we spent last year.
And the funds, the 8.1 million that's being used for these different fiscal, urgent fiscal program needs, what is the source of the 8.1 million?
The source will be the additional $4.8 million fund balance, that I said, after we adjusted, the fund balance will be 4.8. An addition is the $3.3 million from the required technical rebalancing actions, which is primarily coming from the increase to our general sales tax estimate, and from the health and dental savings that we're getting, because our health and dental costs are not going up as much as we thought this year.
And part of the questions, you know, in terms of the sense of where our budget is, you know, by sliding money, but we know we're going to need for the general liability, into general liability, as opposed to maybe using the $15 million that we have for that purpose, and then replenishing that with a separate action, and kind of going down the line with all the different actions we're taking, whether it be for police overtime or any of the other actions, even if they're, even if we determine, or we already, or we know that we have to take those actions in order to ensure we have full patrol staffing, or in order to ensure we're paying out settlements, I think that that will show kind of where, it'll show where our general fund is, and that kind of having money go into the general fund, and then from there allocated, will show how much we're spending out of the general fund, as opposed to having it go straight to liabilities. And then, you look back next year, and you look back to this year, and say, well, we never had to touch our liability $15 million litigation reserve. We were able to pay it out without affecting that. But the truth is, what we really did is we had supplemental funds based upon sales tax revenue and these other adjustments, and that, instead of going into the general fund for general fund purposes, went straight to pay off liability. It just seems like we're not using the funds for what they're there for in terms of liability, and we're also not giving a true accurate assessment of where we are in terms of our general fund and what those funds are being used for. By sliding it straight to these different purposes by your recommendation, as opposed to just having it all come into the general fund, and say, okay, now we have X millions in the general fund, and now this is what we recommend it goes into, and then having a separate action, say, okay, we're going to take this extra money that's now in the general fund and use it for A, B, C, and D, per our budget director's recommendations.
I think that's, it all is going into the general fund. The general liability claims, workers' compensation appropriation, that's a reserve, it's not an appropriation, it's an earmarked reserve. It's really more for catastrophic. It's like, I guess, from our perspective, it's like using the contingency reserve to fund things and then replenishing the contingency reserve. You really want to only go to that catastrophic reserve as really a last resort. So, because the timing of when these claims came in, which was just recently, especially the big $5 million one that just came to council, we saw the opportunity to fund that right away, instead of pulling from a reserve and then trying to fund that, try to bring up that catastrophic reserve at a later date. You could do as you suggest from that perspective. It's an extra step. We're trying to be very clear that we are creating $8 million, and this is a council, this is a council policy, if you take the administration's recommendation on how to spend the $8.1 million. This is our professional recommendation on replenishing that claims right away, since we just had a very unusual two-large claims and settlements with cities. So, we didn't take the extra step of taking it out of the catastrophic, then replenishing the catastrophic, because we really think of that one as really a last resort, kind of like our general fund contingency reserve. But how you're suggesting to do it is not wrong, it's just it's a different methodology of vetigening.
Well, even if not putting it in that particular reserve, but just putting it all, pulling it all in the general fund, and then having a separate action, I think that it may be an extra step, but then at least it shows that, okay, this is how much more revenue or funds we have based upon different actions, based upon sales tax revenue, based upon everything, this is more money than we thought we were going to have, and this is what we recommend you spend it on, as opposed to just directly shifting it into those funds. And you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, but this is supposed to be a recommendation on the slide to say, this isn't shifting it, this is a recommendation to take that, we're telling you, when it's all said and done with everything, there is an extra 8.1 million, and it's the administration's recommendation to spend the 8.1 million in the manner here. Other years, we've said, spend it to go fix a problem, put it towards the unmet deferred maintenance or street pavement maintenance or future deficit reserve. But this year, because of the timing of when these things came along, we're recommending to allocate the small 8.1 million, and we're trying to be very clear that these are needs that we see in the administration, that we're asking council to approve. And it is, we're trying to call out separately, so you can clearly see your policy choices.
Sure. No, I like the specificity of it, and that's important. The transfer of funds to the Hayes Mansion debt is something that, and you mentioned that there was council direction, I recall a general council direction, was there a specific... there a, a specific money amount in council direction, and this is being reflected in this? Or is that just a general council direction?
Well, there was a proposal in the proposed budget that, that eventually was adopted as, and approved as part of the council with the adoption of the 1314 budget. We estimated at the, at the time that we would get $300,000 in annual general fund savings. It's ending up to be, I think, $350,000 in savings approximately. So it is slightly higher, which will be reflected in our forecast going forward. So we're, so we're trying to close out that one, let you know the, the complete results of what happened. But it ended up with $50,000 more annually that we're expecting over, until the year 2000, or 2025, that will annually come to us. So 50, it'll be 50, it was $50,000 more than our estimate. That $300,000 savings was used to balance the budget. So it's been spoken for when we, when the council approved the budget.
Okay. And I, I just, I just can't recall the specifics.
Yeah, so there was a lot of transactions.
There was an allocation to Hayes. Thank you. And then in terms of the, the litigation and the liability claims, and this goes to a, a bigger issue that I'll touch upon in terms of staffing, is that can we expect, Rick, that, you know, we'd like to think this is an aberration, and certainly there's a couple that were very large sums that I believe are more likely aberrations than not. But in terms of a general trend, is the, the strain on staffing in the city attorney's office, can you expect that just because of resources and because of staff, staff being stretched, to be an issue in terms of our, our, our liability claims? In that, that there may be situations in which we may be not required, we're never required to, but we may settle, given the risk of going forward as well, and, and taking into account our resources to be able to vigorously fight claims compared to maybe four or five years ago?
Counsel, first of all, I'd like to note that, and just sort of reiterate that, I, I guess, use Jennifer words, these are, these are unusual, and underscore unusual, that over the last decade, we haven't paid out more than $2 million a year on average. And that's to all claims. And I mean, that, and so these are, to me, are outliers. Yes, we have gone through a, a number of staffing changes. We've had to essentially rebuild the staff in the office in, in many respects. But to the extent that, you know, if you're asking, do we have the capability and can provide the quality legal service that we've have in the past? The answer is yes. I, we, we have very good people. Many of them are new, but they're very good people. And I've had the same concern, I think, it's, I'll use the word settlement creep. Have we had some kind of propensity to be more willing to settle than in the past? And I think the short answer is no. There was a, there was a point in time where we were trying to, some of the smaller cases deal with, just because they weren't worth this, and the staffing shortages. But as we've built up, and we, and, and we do have a combination of very good veterans and some mid-level people that have the capability and can handle these police cases in particular, and some of the others, in a very, very highly competent fashion. So I'm comfortable that these are outliers and will be outliers. I, you know, I, I don't like to roll the dice, but I think, you know, we, over the years, we have had very good success with juries in Santa Clara County, and I, I think will continue.
Yeah, I'm not concerned. Like I said, I feel a couple of them are certainly, you know, outliers, but it's just the general trend of the cost benefit analysis, settling rather than going forward, given staff having to make choices.
I think there was, there was a point where we were down, we had, at one point, a lot of retirements and a lot of people leaving. Some of the smaller cases, we, we, we looked at as, but, but those are very small amounts. And, and, because our philosophy has been and continues to be, we will try the cases. We're not an easy, we don't want to be an easy target for, for, to be held up and, and pay settlements. So the two cases that are the subject of, you know, that are in front of you in terms of the budget are, in my view, not usual. And there's, there's a lot of money, particularly one of them, but it was a very, very rare case. And I, and I will say, it's not just our office, but it's, it's also the reputation of, these are police cases in the San Jose Police Department. In spite of the strains they're going through, is still a highly regarded and very, very, very competent department. And they, I think, as you know from your own personal experience, Santa Clara County juries look very favorable upon this SJPD and their reputation.
Oh, I know that.
That's not to say, that's not to say we don't have strains.
I have very clear and convincing evidence of that based upon my own experience as a public defender, that they, they do hold that reputation. And I'm just concerned about staffing, the, the staffing level and the, the capacity to be able to, to maintain the high level of quality in the city attorney's office. And, you know, we're, we're already discussing and dealing with the ability to do that in the police department. That's been heavily discussed and will continue to be discussed. So yeah, so I, I just want to make sure that you're clear with us as time goes on, if we're able to keep that.
That's my obligation to you as, as, as your lawyer. I think, I will say that the, you know, we've had that concern, but we've been able to rebuild and, and restaff. And I think we have very capable people. I will continue, though, to keep you apprised.
Okay, thank you. And then the last couple areas of discussion, one is the, the fire department, the, the vacancy, and particularly the absentee, the absence rates of going, increasing 25% looks like year over year. And the short-term, you know, issues of having to deal with that, but then also the long-term issue of retention. I know retention doesn't be, doesn't discuss as much in public safety with fire as it is with police. And part of it is the, the lack of the ability for firefighters to be able to laterally move to other departments with the, with the same ability as with the police department. But particularly with the newer recruits, there's certainly a concern with the capacity to be able to keep them long enough, because these absence, the absence hours being so high is, is certainly going to take a toll. And I know we've done a very good job in working with, obviously, the fire department and with local 230 in making sure that our firefighters are doing everything they can to reduce the number of hours off, reduce disabilities. And I think that's been a successful program. But that can only be done, there's only so much that can be done in order to ensure that we have enough firefighters to, to maintain safe staffing levels. And the, one of the charts that I noticed was the, the FTEs needed in terms of relief personnel. And it looks like across the board, from captain to engineer, that there are FTEs needed. And I don't know that, I mean, I know that, and this doesn't require a, a response, just that I know that we're going to be doing an academy this next year. But I'll be very interested in seeing if these absence rates continue and if the vacancy rates at all creep up, now that we've done some aggressive hiring, thanks to the Safer Grant. If we don't have the capacity to do that going forward, and the absentee rates, the absence rates continue, what, if any impact, any, that, that those staffing levels will have in our capacity to be able to, to serve the community? Because I certainly have concerns that our fire department also being stretched rather thin, and especially because we already know that our response times are far behind where they should be. And we definitely don't want to see that creep downward at all in terms of our capacity to respond. And I know that we've seen retention issues in other areas. We've talked about the wastewater and at, as the CED committee, planning department talked about the, the problems and issues with being able to retain and attract folks in our planning department and code inspectors, electricians, what have you. And so I think, think that although right now we are appropriately paying attention to what we have to do to keep and, and retain police officers, that this is beyond just the police department, and it's, it's a citywide issue of what we need to do to attract and, and to retain, and then attract the next generation of employees throughout our department, throughout our city. And finally, it's, it's great to see Silicon Valley rebound. I think that we're certainly benefiting from that rebound. I think that, that it's certainly premature to say whether the fiscal reform plan is, has caused a positive impact. I think that we certainly have seen a negative impact in terms of retention and our capacity to, to serve our residents. And I think at the very least, if the jury's not out, the judge certainly is out on whether the fiscal reform plan is going to be, in the long term, something that's going to be beneficial to our residents. I think in the short term, we've certainly seen impacts on public safety and our capacity to serve at the ground level, particularly in terms of having officers just leaving our apartment at rates that have never been seen before. Thanks.
Counselor Camus?
Well, I want to thank staff for, for their work on this, this budget report. I'm also in, very happy to see the, the, you know, the, the fact that we are making headway on, on our budget. And I am, I'm delighted to see that you are working on reducing our debt and that, that the refinancing of the, the, I guess, the debt on the city hall and parking lot was able to help us with Hayes Mansion. That's, that's something fantastic, and it's, you were going to say something.
I, I want to give the credit to our finance department or Julia Cooper's leadership, who's really, that, they've really been working hard on all of our debt management.
Yeah, I, many kudos to you. I, I come from the financial world, and, and I must say that you guys are doing a lot of great things to help us become more solvent. And I, and I want to thank you and your staff for, for that. I did have a, a kind of a overall question. Whenever we reduce debt, it does free up funds automatically in the general fund? Or is it just on certain bonds? Or is it, that, that might be a big question, but I was wondering if you could help me with it?
It really depends on the source of repayment, or who's, who's paying the bonds. Which, which fund is paying the bonds? Obviously, the general fund has a big part of paying the debt on this building.
Yeah.
But there's other, there's obviously debt in the airport where the general fund's not involved. And when they've done their own refinancing over there, it saved money in the airport. So we are looking at, the finance department looks at opportunities all across all of our debt issuances to constantly get the best rate and, and reduce exposure, variable rates, and, and try to get us the, the least cost financing as we can.
Thank you. I, I, again, my hat's off to you and this, this very optimistic report. I did have a question for our, our legal department here. I, just to key off, just to, you know, the mayor put it in front of us here. Are you saying that, even though that we, that we won the arbitration with, with the POA, and let's say the POA decides not to take us up on the 3% offer, we are absolutely, our hands are locked. We cannot give our employees whatever increase that we want to give them?
That's correct. Under the law, you have the obligation to meet and confirm, bargain in good faith. And, and you also have arbitration in the case of police and fire. You went through a negotiating process. It, it resulted in arbitration. The arbitrator issued an award. You're now back at the table to try to give the police officers something beyond what the arbitrator could do. The arbitrator gave zero. You're trying to give 3% at this time. And if you can't reach agreement, the law doesn't allow you to impose on, on the police, or fire for that matter, because they have the arbitration provisions. I mean, it's, it's sort of an anomaly, but it, it's, it's the way the, the system works. That's unlike the non-public safety unions where you have the ability, if you don't reach agreement, you can, you can impose.
So, I mean, this, this seems very, very unfair to the employees, I think. I, I've actually talked to a couple of police officers who've actually asked me specifically, say, hey, can't you just give it to us and, and, and go for it? So you're saying we break the law by doing that?
Right. It's almost counterintuitive, but you have the obligation to negotiate and bargain in good faith. And if you can't reach an agreement, then the process calls for arbitration. And that's, and, and you've already gone through that process. So it is, does seem counterintuitive, but unfortunately, that's, that's how it, it plays out.
That's perplexing. Well, I'm, I'm far be, for me to advocate breaking the law, but I think that we should look at ways to, 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 to give these employees something. And I'm, I'm hoping to work with you on that. Thank you. Thank you again for the, a great report to the city manager and to the staff.
Councilmember Licardo?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I'll, I'll begin actually where Counselor Camus left off. Rick, and I know this is conversation ultimately, in, in great depth, we'd probably be having in closed session if this were serious consideration. But if, if we were to impose a pay increase for police officers, and we were sued for that, presumably for a violation of Myers-Millens-Brown Act, what's the remedy? What damages do police officers get for the fact that we just gave them more money?
Well, the police officers are, would have to go to spirit of court and file a writ, essentially claiming that you violated the, your obligation to bargain in good faith. And it's an unfair labor practice. And whatever type of relief, whether it be injunctive, it sounds bizarre.
Yeah. But I mean, I guess in the injunctive relief would be, hey, give it back.
Either give it back or whatever, or cease, cease and desist.
Okay.
And, or if there are any potential damages, I, you know, I don't know what remedy the court would fashion. And then off the top of my head, other than some kind of injunctive relief.
Okay. I share the sentiments of my colleague on this one. I think it's, well, anyway, I, I'd like to move on to a couple of questions here about the, about the report. Jennifer, the $18 million we have identified and reserved for overtime for officers. You know, I know we're, we're continuing to hire here in the department, and was thrilled to see over 40 new officers coming out of the last academy. What I want to know is, is there flexibility for the department if they do not have the funding in their regular budget? For some reason, if we're able to implement some kind of lateral strategy, lateral hiring strategy, would they have the flexibility, would the chief have the flexibility to tap this $18 million to be able to hire laterals? Or would the chief need to come back to council for authorization?
You know, the, because it's within the appropriation that, that the council's approved, that the chief would have the discretion, I mean, he'd coordinate with the city manager's office, and we would, we would, we would come back to you and just kind of clean it up, just so you know what's being spent on overtime and what's not. But also in addition to that, if the department could do any further hiring ahead, the city council approved a hire ahead reserve that's sitting in the general fund. So if they needed this and they needed even more money, we have a reserve. It's set up for 1415 right now. I believe there's $3 million in it for hire ahead. We could always advance that money. It's sitting in a reserve today, and we could put that in their department budget if we needed to this year.
That's great. Thank you, Jennifer. And then finally, turning to the last page of the transmittal report, which is page 37. This is the end of the list of the certification of funds, which I know is annually identified by the city manager about the appropriations in the designated funds. And these numbers, I assume, are, are minimal amounts. We're certifying that we have at least this much money in each fund. Is that right?
Well, what this is, is that we, every time that we bring, we increase the source side of any of the funds, that a lot of this is from additional fund balance, we come back and, and we will, I'll sign my life away that I'm certifying that it will be there. So you're not appropriating funds in excess of this. So these are the incremental changes, not the total, to these, in these budgets, the incremental changes to each of the funds on the source side that's funding a lot of the, the items in here, even if we're just increasing the ending fund balance, that contain, is contained within this entire report. So in the general fund in total, there was, you know, $17 million of the changes because of all the different changes with moving money around and...
And you certified we had that much money?
And I'm certifying that it, that is correct when we, when we, when we've closed out that, when we've closed out the fiscal 12, 13 year and any grants we're recognizing or what, or anything new, or transfers into any other, any of the funds. But all the funds that have an action on the source side are all listed here. And there's three pages worth of them. And so we carefully make sure that everything's in balance and that you know that we are officially certifying that we believe that this money will be available in 1314.
Right. So then, directing your attention to the subdivision park trust. That includes both PIO and PDO funds. Is that right?
Correct.
And so the 19.5 million dollar figure we see there, could you help me understand, is that 19 and a half million dollars that we're actually directing this year to go to allocate for construction projects and parks? Or is that how much money's actually left in the fund?
Okay. So the detail on the subdivision park trust fund is on section four, pages 134, 135, 136, and 137.
Right.
The, the biggest piece of that, that we see, the 19, that is solely from a fund balance reconciliation. So that was... So, that was, so we're increasing the beginning fund balance in that fund. So, that's from additional funds that came in or were not spent in the prior year that we're carrying over into the '13, '14 fiscal year. So, and then we're going to use a lot of that money, and we're going to rebudget a bunch of projects that are all detailed on those three pages, or the four pages.
Okay.
So, we're carrying over money. So, I'm certifying that that carryover of the money, when we reconcile this fund balance with the finance department's closeout of this fund, we ended up not spending some money we thought we needed to, and we need to rebudget a bunch of projects, which are all detailed out, and we're saying that money is there to rebudget and fund these projects.
Okay. And of course, if we were to go to try to find the total aggregate amount in the subdivision park trust, which I had a hard time, I don't think I'd find it in this document based on my search. I assume I'd find it in the city manager's document back in the spring.
We're about, hopefully, two weeks away of actually printing our adopted budget, and that's why you can't find it, because that document's not printed. We have to redo the whole document, and we had to take a pause while we were doing this report, so we're back on it, and hopefully, you'll have it on your desk in a couple of weeks for the printers.
Fabulous. And I look forward to the day when we don't have to have it on our desk, but instead, just on our desktop.
Yeah, actually, it is on the desktop, and if we can automate our budget system, it'll be all that much better.
Yes, agreed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carrera.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you again for a great report and just overall good work. Really appreciate it. I had a question, and I guess this is in the executive summary. The Sarah property tax increment funding that County Santa Clara has withheld to fund the county employees' retirement, PERS levy and water district levy, we have the tentative ruling. When do we expect the appeal to be heard?
We have a final judgment, and they have filed the appeal, I believe, in August. So, I believe the briefing schedule probably, briefs would be done, I would guess, by the end of the year, and then it's up to the court to set oral argument. I think we should have a decision by summer. The county is holding, it's important, they're holding these monies in escrow, so pending, they've not remitted the funds, but they are holding the monies in escrow.
So, they're not spending them?
Yeah.
That's your point?
That's my point.
So, they're set aside, ready to pay us, should the call come?
At least that's what they tell us they have in escrow, and they've even given us an amount.
So, just for the folks at home, and as everyone says, the one or two people that are watching this, can you just explain what this is, this PERS levy and water district levy? What's it for, and how did we end up with that? Somebody explain.
The PERS levy goes back to 1944. It's a, the county has a override, I think it's approximately .38 or 0.38 cents on your, on your property tax bill. If you look at the atomization of your property tax bill, you'll see it there. It's throughout the county, and it helps fund the county's retirement obligations. Historically, they could not and did not collect those amounts in redevelopment areas above the base here. So, any and all tax increment collected that was due under redevelopment went to the redevelopment agency, and there's case law and constitutional law that supports that. The county commenced withholding that coincidentally at the end of the redevelopment, when redevelopment went away, although they had been making chatter for a few years that they were thinking of doing this. They actually withheld the amounts, and so we had to go to court to challenge that. It's similar with respect to the water district levy, so it's the same issue.
So, they basically got them, tried to make them at a, and a higher priority on the list to be paid?
Right. They're well, it's, it's an amount that we don't believe is even due and owing. It's not even a higher priority. They are not entitled to those amounts. Those are amounts that are pledged to bondholders and other creditors. They're redevelopment tax increment, and the constitution, the California constitution requires that those money go to redevelopment agencies. We had to sue, and a court sided with us on that. The county has filed an appeal, and so it has to play itself out.
So, again, so it's money that would be going, the county wants this money to go to pay for retirement?
Retirement obligations, yes.
Obligations for county employees.
For PERS. They're in CalPERS, and the money would go to CalPERS.
Okay.
That's why it's the PERS levy.
And, and right now, it's on everybody's tax, it's on your property tax.
Yeah, you can see it.
There's a percentage, so you're paying, everybody that owns a piece of property is paying this amount on their property to fund county retirement.
Right. There's an atomization, you'll see it on your property tax bill.
Okay, great. I just wanted to call out something good, and I had the pager, and I think I just lost it. Lake Cunningham Fund, and is doing better, right? And so, yeah, we're seeing a positive variance of $94,000, 13.5%, because they're getting parking revenue. So, I just wanted to commend Parks and Rec for some of the creative things they do out there in the parks to increase fees and to, you know, so that we can support the parks. Not that everyone loves higher fees, but it does make sure that we have sustainability in our parks, and that parking revenue's really helped. And also, the concessions are bringing in more money, and basically, the park's doing well. Skate parks bringing in more money. So, that's, that's a positive thing, and that goes on. I just wanted to call that out and commend Parks and Rec for that. And in terms of the money that we've set aside to potentially give additional compensation to the police department, just want to make sure you understand this. So, the 15.5 million, because it's two-year, 15.5 million, were we, am I reading this as we were 1.1 million short, or, because we have 10, we had 10 million to 11.1 million set aside, and our, the one-year deal is like six and a half, and the other one's 15.5. So, where does that, is that contemplated in over two years? Is that why it's not adding up?
Yeah, the 15.5 million is contemplated over two years, with, but it was only 2.5% in the first year, and so, and 2.5% in the second year, because we took, you know, we took, we take a multi-two-year view of the budget when we're doing a balancing the budget. So, to the fact that if we did a 3%, you know, and increased that half, you know, the 2.5% to 3%, in the current year's budget, we would be short. So, hence why the administration's recommending to put, set aside a little bit more money to ensure that if that negotiated settlement could come out of that deal, that we had the money set aside to pay.
Well, I just want to say that I think all of us up here are hoping for positive outcome in the negotiations with the POA, because I think we all would like to give, pay increases to our police officers. Notwithstanding the retention issues we all have, I think everybody up here would like to see us be able to resolve that, and so, I just hope that that does get resolved and we're able to come to terms and be able to give some, some additional increase to our, to our police officers. And the last thing is, the fiscal reform plan, which was already alluded to, there are remaining elements left of it, and I would say, I think you wrote in here that basically it's, this has helped us move forward on these things, the elements of the fiscal reform plan. It's pretty involved, and it still includes, obviously, the retirement reform that's, that's been passed to be, you know, we're still going through that process in the court, and also revenue measures that are also contemplated, increasing, you know, asking for more revenue too. So, I think we're still in the process of moving this forward, but we're, I think we're going in the right direction, and, you know, we just need to stay, stay the course and continue to work towards increasing services and doing the right things on our budget here. Thank you.
Mr. Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. I won't belabor this discussion most of the, and repeat questions, but I do, wanted an update from staff on the summary, page 29 at the bottom, the traffic capital funds. Does any of this from the federal-state sources include the, there was a settlement amount that we were going to get from the state with the relinquishment of highway, portions of Highway 82, and, which included Alum Rock and Santa Clara Street?
Hans Larson, Director of Transportation, Councilmember Campos. Yes, we received approximately $12 million from the state of California, actually through some federal grants that they allocated to us. That was part of our relinquishment agreement with them for the relinquishment of state routes 82 and 130. So, that, those, we have received the grants, and they're incorporated into the adopted budget.
So, they're, so then, they would be in this, I mean, I know you're trying to save trees, so you probably didn't list everything that you're funding in there, but that's part of, part of that, and I know that's part of the BRT project, that once that's done, you'll go and repave the streets?
Yeah, so, we are the contracts that will spend that money. We're working on them now. So, there, there will be a contract that does the Alameda, once the pedestrianization improvements that are under construction now, those are done. There'll be a follow-on pavement contract. We'll do work on the Monterey Highway corridor, and then we have an agreement with VTA to integrate the pavement rehabilitation together with the BRT project.
Okay, and portions of that BRT project is getting funded through those grants that came with the relinquishment?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Mr. Rocha.
Thank you, Mayor. Two questions, and let me also join the accolades for the work and the document. Appreciate it very much. The, you know, after I read this, I was trying to find it just now, so I can point to it and make it a little bit easier for you to ask the question, or to answer the question, and I can't find it for the life of me, but it was in your presentation a little bit, where you talked about all the economic indicators positive in our funds as well, and then you also mentioned the projected deficit in 1415. So, given all that, can you explain to me in layman's terms, of course, of why if all the economic indicators look positive, and they are positive, and this year's surplus, we look at the fiscal year 1415, and we now return to a deficit, if you don't mind?
Yes, I wish it wasn't that way, but it's just strictly because of our expenditures just outstripping our revenue growth. We have pretty moderate revenue growth in our five-year forecast, so of course, we'll relook at that. So, when we do another five-year forecast, we'll see, you know, can it be improved at all? I don't, I don't, I think we were in a, you know, pre, you know, moderate zone. I don't think we were too conservative or too aggressive in our revenues when we, last forecast we put together. We also have taken, you know, one of our bigger expenditures is the retirement costs, and we've used what Chiron has given us to forecast over the next five years. We'll remain to see what, if what those numbers end up being, because no, they won't be what they gave us, because all, you know, they'll be updating that as well. So, we're pretty close to the margin if you're considering, you know, how large the general fund is. We, if we don't need that contingency plan, the $20 million, well, the last update we did, it was somewhere in the $5 million deficit. It's pretty close, and that's pretty on the margin from looking one whole year out, or actually, it was 18 months out from the last time we did the forecast. If we needed the, if we needed the contingency plan, we were looking at about a $10.9 million deficit, and then, you know, I believe the next year, the year after that, we went positive. There was a year that went slightly positive, but this is, you know, formulating debt schedules and all kinds of expenditure schedules, along with revenues, ups and downs of what we're going to have to do, and projecting, you know, the several hundred, several hundred revenue sources we have. So, I think we're just kind of skimming along the bottom right now. We do need to, and, you know, and we also did add in the compensation adjustments, which we hadn't had in previous forecasts. So, if you had taken those out, we would be positive in all five, all five years, but it was the administration's feeling that that's a cost of doing business, and we needed to put those, put back some raises into the forecast, so that, that extra cost that hadn't been there previously is, you know, causing it to drag a little bit into the negative. We will completely update everything and present it to you in February, and so you'll have a better picture as you're putting together the next year's budget. The information in this report, you know, I always contemplate, well, how, what does the information in this report do from a forecast perspective? Does it really change our outlook? We were so close. I mean, sales tech was slightly better, but I don't see any major surprises that would say, oh, gosh, I think our forecast is much worse, or it's much better. I think it's somewhere in that ballpark, but we will rebuild everything. Where, one, one good thing that, that will happen is the, you know, as we have vacancies, the Tier Two retirement system is really, is saving money. So, that could, once we redo, we build our budget on a person-by-person basis, and when we, when we do look at that, that might really have a positive impact on when we put the numbers together, but it'll remain to be seen once we put every last number together. But it's a good question and something that, that I think, you know, we're at least out of the woods, I think, all, all things being equal, on any of those major deficits that you were forced to balance overall several years.
Thank you. So, I better understand, and then I also less understand how we can still be in the same scenario, because all the issues you just talked about, from pension reform to fiscal reform, to our staffing reductions, and all the economic indicators, and all the funds, and everything's showing the exact opposite of what the outcome should be, but yet, I guess at the end of the day, what you talked about is these are just general operating financial obligations, and they're standard, and there's no major issues, as you just closed with it. If that's a good summary.
Yeah, and in general, like, for example, our retirement costs by themselves went up 13% year-over-year this year, but I'm not saying generally, you know, our revenue is not going up 13% year-over-year. So, that's what's, that's what I mean by it's the expenditures, it's a little bit outstripping the revenue growth. But on, you know, on the goods side, you know, for, I haven't seen this happen, but the health rates were really low this year, which was a good, piece of good news, but I expect them to pop back up to 11% growth range, but we'll see with all the changes happening in the healthcare system.
Thank you. That was one question ahead, and the final question is more of an operational issue. Have we made any expenditures or investment or progress on opening the police substation? I know we have the dollars budgeted for it.
So, I will let the, if the police department is here, they can talk about the progress in opening it, but there is going to be an information memo that will be distributed shortly, probably soon, the next week or two, on the, on the substation. The substation was the only programmatic item that was part of the $20 million contingency plan, so we were holding it, not opening it in case we needed to cash in that money to backfill that $20 million if we were to lose it. The last discussion I had with the police department is that, besides the fact that that probably won't hap, we, we won't know the outcome of that until at least January, so they, and they need some advance notice to open up the substation. Because of their staffing situation, they're not ready to open it, and so they want some more months to evaluate their patrol staffing and if they're ready to decentralize patrol from the main headquarters down there. So, we will give you a more up-to-date information memo with more information in that in the next week or two about that, but I think, you know, if, if we don't need that contingency plan, there will be savings, that, because we won't be spending that money, but if we do need it, then it won't, it wouldn't have opened anyway.
Good, thank you. Councilor Oliverio.
Thank you, Mayor Reed. Jennifer, I wanted to thank you for the work, as everyone else has here. Obviously, it's quite a work of art and science that you do to put this together every year and be as accurate as you can, be with so many variables that are uncontrollable by us, so that compliment goes to you and your entire staff that works on the document. And, and I also enjoyed the simplification into the last council member's question on the structural deficit, just the sheer fact of expenses are exceeding revenue, and that's the predicament we've been in for quite a while. On the question of, you have some limited abilities based on FMS. From talking to your colleagues in other cities who probably have more advanced financial systems, is their way of life just easier on a daily basis, or the times when you have to produce these reports? And is it, is it in such a way that you would just hear right now? Can you, how would that work?
Well, I really appreciate that the city council took the city manager's recommendation to put it aside a few billion dollars for a new budget system, because we do things extraordinarily manual in the budget office and across the whole city. So, we have mapped out the whole system. You know, I think people in other jurisdictions probably have it a lot easier than we do, although San Jose is a very complex organization compared to a lot of our neighboring cities. We've got, you know, managing over 100 funds is, we have a lot of funds. I've had other consultants come and talk about, wow, you have a lot of funds you're managing, but that's how we have it here in San Jose. We will, I think, once we get a system in place, which will take a couple of years, because it's just a lot of work to do it, we will have much more automation in how we print our documents, how we look up things, the transparency of everything. It'll save staff time, not just in the budget office, but across the entire organization. So, we're really looking forward to it. It's a system that's been originally put in place when our city manager was a budget analyst in the budget office back in the 80s, right, Deborah? So, it's evolved since then, and of course, we've improved it with our IT department, but it is quite a challenge to put together these documents.
And then you make it sound, though, as the budget process is separate from FMS. Would that be accurate?
Yeah, the budget process is separate. So, FMS just, it captures the transactions, and we have our own separate automated budget system that does interface somewhat, but not completely, and we also interface with our PeopleSoft payroll system, because we download information about every single person when, because we build our budget at a very detailed level. But we also need to replace our FMS system, and we will keep all of that in mind and make sure all of our systems can talk to each other as we move forward.
But the, but the budget system doesn't need to be in real time with the transaction that just occurred in FMS. As long as you have a snapshot of data, then you can proceed to do your process to come to the budget. to the budget.
Correct. We get monthly reports, or we can go into the system anytime and look at how things are tracking, which is what our staff does in conjunction with the departments.
So do monthly reports, but as the council's deliberating in May, you might be doing reports every day?
We might be doing reports every day, yes.
Okay, and then on the funds, the, all the hundreds of funds we have, or 100 funds, whatever the number is, you probably know it's like 113 or something?
About that.
Okay. Humor me. No, but is there any, is there any way to reduce those amount of funds, or by the nature of the money and the strings attached, that that's the only way to do it?
I don't think it's the only way, but it, I think that's one of the things that, as we rebuild, when we put a new budget system in place, that we ought to rethink about the number of funds and how they're divided. But they are divided, that's why we have that nice budgeted funds guide. They are divided and have distinct purposes for all the funds. It doesn't have to be organized that way in certain areas, but it does help us keep track of our funds, and it is, at some level, people that are constituencies of those different funds can understand where the money's coming from and what's particularly budgeted in those funds, but I think that, you know, as you have an opportunity to automate, you rethink all those things and try to change your business practices in some regard to how it makes sense.
And then if you're ever going to condense funds, is that something you're going to do on an administrative level, or is that something that we approve?
That, no, the city council would have to approve that, because it would involve appropriations, so, and we have a lot of our funds that are approved in the municipal code and by ordinance, and you would, we would have to come back to you and get your approval for any of that.
And in the spectrum of the last five years, have you consolidated any of the funds? Are they all?
We have actually, because of funding challenges, we've actually gotten rid of a lot of funds, so we have, and we've closed out funds that are no longer necessary or viable. So we have shrunk our funds from that perspective, and I, we do urge the departments to use other abilities within our FMS to track expenditures rather than always create new funds, because sometimes it's easier to create a new fund, but we have other ways of tracking money. And so we're always contemplating that anytime we have something new come up.
And then I appreciate the comments on the second tier is providing cost savings, and I think that's something valuable that is just important to remind as that's, as more and more people are on that retirement benefit. And then, remind me, in the past, we had had these budget actions where whatever was left over, half went to road paving and half went to reserves. Is that a future action coming, or did we abandon that policy?
No, that's a, that policy is alive and well, is the city council policy, that 50% of any remaining fund balance after we do cleanup adjustments should go to the future deficit reserve for the following year, if there's a deficit, or, and to, like, unmet deferred infrastructure needs, primarily, you know, we haven't, we're really doing it to pavement maintenance, if there's no other needs that are more pressing. So these needs that we're coming up with here, and the fact that, you know, we do have 13, you know, we have, well, now it'll be 12 million if you accept our recommendations, 12 million left in a future deficit reserve. We think that we, these are very urgent, that the council needs to consider at this time, rather than, you know, putting even more money in our reserve, because we have bills that need to be paid, for example, on the general liability line item.
So today's action is in place of the actions we passed?
Yes, we will not be coming back. This will close out any extra fund balance.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to go back to the discussion about the forecasts and the costs going up faster than revenues, and make sure I've got it right. So we have $20 million in this budget that we're counting on from changes, the elimination of the supplemental retirement payments, SRBR, and savings from adopting a lower-cost healthcare plan, that's 20 million. So we're, that's in the budget, and I presume that if it's in this year's budget, it's in the forecast for future years?
It is.
As a continuing savings. But we're also holding $20 million of actions, because the receipt of the 20 million is contingent upon the litigation.
Correct.
So, but that's in the budget and in the forecast.
That, yes, well, if we needed to pull, if we needed to enact the contingency plan, we have, the council approved a $20 million ongoing plan. So basically, what was, so we have, we would, we could substitute, we wipe out some of our current year reserves to backfill that 20 million in the current year, like, for example, the budget stabilization reserve, part of the future deficit reserve, and we would not open the substation. From an ongoing perspective, so it would not have any further impact on the, on the budget.
So if we lose the $20 million?
On, if we lose, if we lose the 20 million ongoing to not have any impact on the budget, what was on the contingency plan is the second-year 2% raises. They were contingent, so those would be coming out of the forecast to help offset the $20 million, and we also, we would also not be opening the substation potentially. Obviously, the council could revisit all of these decisions, and we took some of the ongoing portion of the future deficit reserve that came with the additional property tax money to have no further impact on the budget. So we, the council prudently put together an ongoing contingency plan, so because that's an ongoing, that would be an ongoing hit to our budget if we were to lose that 20 million.
Okay, and if we get to keep the $20 million, we'll just keep this budget going as approved?
Correct.
So that's in the budget and in the forecast, then there's other savings that are subject to Measure B litigation, and that amounts to, in the general fund, about $12 million a year for the next four years, roughly.
Correct.
That is not in the budget and not in the forecast.
That's correct.
So when our expenses are going up, we do have the potential for some offsetting savings, but we're not counting that, because it's still litigation that's out there in the future.
That's, we're not counting that, or we're not, we're also not counting anything on the revenue side that we would win in any ballot, we would, you know, have any ballot measure succeed or anything, where, so that's neutral on the budget right now. So any, if we were to get any ballot measures approved, or we were to get that retirement reform over the goal line, both those things would improve our fiscal situation ongoing.
Okay, then on page 18 of the transmittal memorandum, you discuss the total retirement costs after adjustments for the 13, 14 budget, which is the year we're in. Last year, in the 12, 13 budget, which we're closing out here today, retirement costs were flat, but we have an increase in this year's budget that we're absorbing with the actions that we're taking. I think you said 12 or 13% increase.
Yeah, so there's a, just year-over-year, and the council obviously took that into account when they adopted the budget, except for this extra $820,000. Year-over-year, retirement went up 13 and 1/2% in the general fund, 12.4% all funds, based on what our annual required contributions need to be.
So the total retirement cost is, after the adjustments for the total retirement costs, is $271.2 million in this fiscal year, and that compares to a total of 10 years ago of $72 million. So I'm calling a $200 million increase, it's 198, 199.8, I guess. $200 million increase in 10 years is a really big number, and that's obviously why we've had a lot of distress in our budgets and had to close a lot of gaps. That's clearly a major contributor. Unfortunately, those numbers are going to continue to go up, based on what the retirement board's actuaries have told us. So the real question is whether or not they'll go up faster than revenues, or if revenues will be enough to offset them. And right now, well, this year, I guess the revenues were just about equal.
Along with other factors, but again, looking at the last forecast we did, we did use numbers from Chiron that project that had retirement going up, and our revenues were, and we had revenues going up, you know, moderately, and the revenues were just not quite enough to cover those retirement costs over the forecast period. So we tried to account for that on both sides, that those, both those things would be going up, but they're just, our projections just show it that's not quite enough on the revenue side to oversee that, along with other cost increases, not just this, it's, you know, all the cost side.
Well, retirement cost is not the only thing that increased.
Right, there's other things that are increasing.
Right, I think councils, for the moment, their questions, answers, and their comments made, somebody take some public testimony. We have requests to speak, Mr. Wall.
Sir, Jennifer, could you put up the utility fund slide, please? Waiting for that, we've heard the discussion once again for police and paving, but yet there's no real discussion about how you spend money with reference to the School of Arts 35-year contract with the Mexican Heritage Plaza. You were to eliminate that contract today, you would realize 500, or $450,000 savings as I speak today. Over a five-year period, it would be well over $3 million just in, in the contract, but also an additional 1.9 million savings in the capital improvement budget. So I think you need to really revisit and sell that Mexican Heritage Plaza, and start funding what people want and need, and that's police and fire. Now, let's look at the utility funds up there. If you, as council, would make structural changes either to the municipal code or the city charter with reference to low bid as being the only bids that are accepted for capital improvement projects, your environmental innovation center project would not be the scandal that it is today. And that means that there's more savings of money there. In other words, you get what you pay for sometimes, and this low bid business opens the door for people, unscrupulous contractors, to lowball the city that ends up costing the city. With a reference to the water pollution control plant, the sanitary and storm sewer systems, we haven't heard the hundreds of millions of dollars that have been left in that capital improvement program at the plant, how some of these projects have to be rebudgeted year after year, and the credits that have to go back to the tributary agencies because of substandard and/or incompetent management of these funds. So there's a lot of things that can be done at the council level to really make this budget forecast a lot better for the citizens and ratepayers, and better off the quality of life in our city. Thank you.
That concludes the public testimony. We have a motion to accept the report and approve the appropriations and the corrections that are recommended. I had one correction, I did the math wrong, the increase in retirement costs over the last decade is only $199.2 million. That's off a little bit, so I feel better. On the motion to approve, all in favor, opposed, none opposed, motion is approved. Good work, staff. Next item is 3.4, an ordinance requiring employee contributions to federated retirement plan while receiving supplemental military pay. We have a motion to approve the staff recommendation. I have one request to speak, Mr. Wall.
I reject this type of ordinance. Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Rara, I thank you for your service to our armed forces, but when we have benefit and salary cuts within our city employees who also have to have military service, and even they, they don't get paid that much, we as a city should be grateful and thankful and cover this cost, because they are risking life and limb so we can enjoy the fruits of our freedom. And I think that this cost should be borne by a grateful city to ensure the attraction and retention of employees through this benefit of military service to our country. And I think when we start cutting corners to our service people, we cut corners to the very fabric that keeps us all free. So I summarily hope that you would revisit this and just cancel it outright, and be generous and fund this, and thanks to our troops. Thank you.
Councilmember Chu.
I'm thinking, Mayor, I'm just trying to find out, is there a number associated with this cost? Anybody? How much are we spending? How many of our employee are currently serving the military?
Councilmember, I don't have those numbers. We can get that back to you in an info memo, but don't have the information available.
Okay. Yeah, I, I don't believe it's a huge number, and during this, our, our economic situations, I believe that we should continue, encourage our employee to serve in the armed forces, so I will not be supporting the motion.
On the motion, all in favor, opposed, one, two opposed, I think we have enough here, did we get to six? Yes, Compos and Chu oppose, the rest in favor, guess it's seven. All right, motion is approved. Item 3.5 is our next, Terms of Agreement with Association of Engineers and Architects, IFTE Local 21, units 41, 42, and unit 43.
Mayor, we have no presentation, but I just would like to make a few very brief comments, and basically, this item reflects the fact that the city has reached a tentative agreement with our Association of Engineers and Architects, and we have been notified that the membership of the units have ratified the tentative agreement, and so I would like to thank all the team members who worked hard to reach this agreement. On the side of the Engineers and Architects, Michael Seville, John Mukar, and Diana Butcher, and on the city's team, Alex Gerza, who served as lead negotiator, Dave Sykes, our director of Public Works, Carolyn Gibson, and Cheryl Parkman, both of Office of Employee Relations. We do appreciate the efforts of the AEA team and look forward to continuing to have a great relationship with them moving forward. And that concludes my comments, and we do recommend your approval.
We have a motion to approve. I just wanted to note that this is a 2% increase in pay for this unit, and check my math, is this unit number six, bargaining unit number six we have contracts with? I see Alex Gerza's shaking his head, yes, it's number six, and we're happy to be able to restore a small part of the 10% cuts in total compensation, that at least 10% our employees took, some took larger cuts. This is not all of it, but it is a small part of it, and we're happy we're able to do that. It's one of the benefits of this year's budget, that we're able to restore some of that pay, and we appreciate the hard work of our people who have worked through difficult times despite taking pay cuts, and they've made sacrifices that have helped us keep hundreds of their coworkers working with them and delivering services to people of San Jose, and we appreciate that. Mr. Wall, you want to speak on this item?
A little bit concerned as to the fairness about people who work over, are out of class. I know that they've changed their agreement from three months that they'd have to wait before they receive a higher-class pay to a minimum of one month, but I think the instant that you work out of class, you should be compensated, and so I think that that should be revisited. Also, this unique algorithm for sick leave payout seems to go to violate the spirit and intent of the sick leave benefit that is a property right. Now, freezing these amounts, enforcing employees to use the amounts that are frozen so they can't be paid out at the end of their, at the end of their work service to the city, I think is malicious. I think it undermines the entire benefit that was conferred upon employees at the time they were hired, and I think that the city is basically contradicting what you've just said, Mr. Mayor, in glowing contributions to our cities. Just remember, our city manager is going to retire this year, and I'm, I believe that she should be paid her sick leave, that you, as well as five other members of the council, Mr. Mayor, conferred upon her when she was appointed city manager. So remember that this, this type of sick leave payout is part and parcel of this Measure B business, and it may be actionable, I do not know, but I support that you don't go around unilaterally breaking contracts with people, and that includes our city manager when she retires, and her cash out for monies earned over many, many years, dating back maybe to the year of Methuselah, but still, she's entitled to have that money. Thank you.
That concludes public testimony on this item. We have a motion to approve. On the motion, all in favor, opposed, none opposed, motion is approved. Our next item is 3.6, Semiannual Recommendations Follow-Up Report on All Outstanding Audit Recommendations by Our City Auditor Sharon Erickson.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. This is the Recommendation Status Report for the six months ended June 30th of 2013. Just by way of introduction, the City Auditor's Office conducts audits and makes recommendations to strengthen accountability and approve the efficiency and effectiveness of city programs. The office monitors the progress of recommendations that we make in our audit reports, and we report on that status every six months. This report is an informational report. It summarizes the status of 240 open audit recommendations. It includes 32 recommend, new recommendations from audits that were issued within the last six months. Since our last report, 20 recommendations. Since our last report, 20 recommendations were implemented or closed. A total of 145 recommendations are partly implemented, 75 recommendations are not yet implemented. A total of 48 recommendations are noted in the report as having potential budget impacts. Those impacts totaled from $40 to $58 million. Those will be considered and are considered routinely as part of the budget process. A total of 14 of the 39 reports that are shown in this report have recommendations with potential meet and confer issues. With that, I would like to thank the city staff who graciously accept our audit recommendations when we make them and who try their darndest to implement them as time goes on. And I want to thank my staff for their hard work in preparing this report for you. We're happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, we ask acceptance of the report.
We have a motion to accept the report. On the motion, Councilmember Oliverio.
Thank you, Mayor Reed. We had heard this item at the Public Safety Finance Strategic Support Committee, but being it that these are very important audits, audits that we have often lauded the office of the auditor about how great the work is, many of these recommendations have been unable to be implemented for years. So I think it's important that it comes to the council agendas so that we know there are items that we might want to have done but have not been implemented. And it's, it's obvious that, you know, when we took a break in the summer and didn't have a council meeting, there was still plenty of work to be done at the staff level. And I think we just need to take a look at, prior to pushing new things on staff, that they already have a massive backlog of things to implement based on auditor's reports that we have approved and oftentimes showered with accolades. So I just want, I think it's important that the council sees this at the council meeting versus just at the committee meeting level. Thank you.
Councilmember Liccardo?
I just had a couple of questions of department heads about the remaining implementation. I see Chief Torres is here. I could just ask a question about the, the pilot involving the squad, trucks or cars. I was wondering, I know there's an end date on this pilot, and I think that's in October. I'm just wondering if, at this point, how comprehensive or how extensive is this pilot? Do we have a lot of these vehicles out there or just a couple? And do we have any sense about whether this is really improving our effectiveness and efficiency in terms of responding to medical calls?
Ruben Torres, interim fire chief. Thank you, Councilmember Liccardo. As far as this squad, the squad program is concerned, we do believe that it is effective. It's meeting our primary goal of keeping our engines and trucks, the larger vehicles, in service to handle the larger emergencies. As far as the analysis that we're completing to see how, how effective it is, we're still working on that. We're trying to gather the data. We want to make sure that when we do provide the data, it's correct and accurate, and that we can clearly say this is a program that is working.
Could you give me a sense of just how extensive this pilot program is? Do we have it at just a couple of stations or lots?
We currently have five squads throughout the city located where we think that they're going to reach, or we're going to maximize the use of these squads. They're two-person squads. They carry a fire paramedic and a driver.
Okay, great. Well, I look forward to the report, and it's great to see it's being implemented. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then just one question for police department regarding civilianization. I'm sorry to make you come all the way down here, Dave, but thank you for being here. I'll tell you the question so you can think about it on the way down. It's really, I know there was an extensive audit done on civilianization. I know that there are constraints and limitations in senior staff's ability to implement, given everything else you guys are trying to do and deal with. And I know you've had a significant amount of civilianization already in just the last year and a half. Because the question is, is there more room for civilianization? In other words, clearly, you know, from the auditor's perspective, these recommendations are partially implemented. Because the question is, from the perspective of the department, you know, have we really squeezed that turnip dry, or is there, is there something more?
Well, thank you, Dave Knopf. I think we'll continue to evaluate that as, as we move along. I think that we're going to get down to a certain staffing level that really, these are some jobs that were always done by police, police officers and were, you know, in some ways bound by needing sworn component involved in the process. I think that we can assist in the process by civilianizing some of those program, those positions, and then sending those back to patrol where we need that staffing. But I mean, we're still have to, we need to evaluate that process as we move forward.
Okay. So it sounds like the jury's still out?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Dave.
Councilmember, Mayor, if I might, I do think we have a real opportunity with the CSOs coming online in the January timeframe and beyond. At least, I think the hiring happens in January. I don't think they'll be operational.
Yeah, it'll take, I don't know the total timeframe, but sometime after the first of the year, we'll start bringing on the CSOs. And I think that'll be a great fit for us to, to, to help out with a lot of things and, and maybe even expanding that program as we move forward.
I agree. I think there's real promise there. And I recognize our officers are scarce, and so being able to take some of those tasks off their hands so they can be out there on the street is a great thing. So thank you.
Sure.
Certainly, if we can't keep up the hiring pace sufficient to meet the needs of the department, civilianization becomes more and more important. When we're short of police officers, having them do jobs that they're not required to do gets to be a higher and higher opportunity cost because we just lose their ability to be out on patrol or wherever else they might be. And so this, you got the civilianization, you have the officers at the airport, which theoretically, those jobs could be done by the, by the sheriffs, as we've talked about in the past. Hopefully, we won't get there because we're having good success recruiting and hiring, but we also have losses due to resignation retirements. And civilianization is one of the ways to cover that gap until we can, can get there. And obviously, the auditor has pointed out, some of those positions, some are more easy than others to be done. But it's good that the department has an open mind on it as we try to staff most effectively. Any other questions or comments? I have one request to speak. Mr. Wall?
This report is obviously well received by everybody, including myself, but therein lies an organizational flaw, not in the auditor's office, but more or less from the management office. On page 110 to 118 reflects the 22 items of the emergence, or the Environmental Services Department that were cited by the auditor. Of the 22 items, 10 of them have not been implemented at all. 11 have been partially implemented, and only one have been totally implemented. Now, this is stemming from an audit that's about a year and two months old. Now, on page, or audit number 13, this deals with this capital improvement monies that were generated and held, and how you're not supposed to raise rates unless you have reasonable targets that can be met. Fine. The main crux of this is how do you manage by improvement or performance-based management when you have the auditor come in, show a department which should know by definition because their manager's getting paid great sums, where they're screwing up, they don't fix it? At what point in time is there some deterrence for noncompliance? Deterrence in the fact that your, your performance-based wages are taken away from you, or you get summarily booted out of city service because you're not doing your job? Now, this is a lot of money, taxpayer money, going into doing these audits. And it's really amazing to me how the auditor and her staff can go into a complicated department like Environmental Services or any other department, realize how poorly it's managed, and not being given more authority to like manage the city. I mean, it makes sense to me because everybody applauds these audit reports as they should because they're very well done. So you has the council have an affirmative duty now to set the bar for deterrence for not complying and implementing these terms. That's your job. So far, you haven't done it, and you've just given greenhouse gases as to why it's not being done. Thank you.
That concludes public testimony. Councilmember Oliverio, did you have something to add?
I did. I forgot to mention that some of these recommendations have been outstanding 10 years, and that there is cost savings as we go, you know, as we always head into the budget years, budget time of potentially $40 to $58 million in cost savings. And I guess one question for the auditor, when you have that number of that amount of money in cost savings approximately, what portion of that are items that must be part of the meet and confer process or labor negotiations?
You know, I don't have the breakdown in front of me. A significant number of those are meet and confer, but for example, some of our pension recommendations, we didn't even try to tally how much money was involved. A lot of the money in, in the, a large part of the $40 million is civilianization and staffing ratios in the police department. The department is, as people have said earlier, is working on those recommendations. At least 22 of the, of the 88 positions that we identified have been civilianized. The department has moved forward with community service officers, with crime prevention specialists. So they are moving. Some of the positions that we identified are actually vacant right now. So the department has been moving people back out to the street where things were less important in, in, you know, back at the, at the station, at the headquarters. So that, that is a large portion of these recommendations. You know, the, the rest are just kind of sprinkled through with dollars involved, and I really don't have that breakdown off the top of my head.
I appreciate it. Thank you again for your work.
We have a motion to accept the report. On that motion, all in favor, opposed, none opposed, that's approved. Moving now to item 4.1, permit fees for residential commercial roof-mounted energy.
Thank you. Is there a staff report? I guess not. Okay, all right. Well, I just wanted to start it out by saying the planning and building staff for, for analyzing this solar energy permit and updating the data as outlined in the Senate Bill 1222. But most of all, I'd like to thank our Senator Mark Leno and our own Speaker Proten Norah Compos for author and sponsor this bill 1222. You know, I've been thinking about creating some incentive program to, to increase the residential and commercial roof mounted solar energy panel for, for a long time. But I, it was difficult for me to, to find, to really determine how much we should be offering to, to, to those residents or business that is willing to put the solar panel on their rooftop, pretty much to fulfill our green vision goal. So I think this bill 1222 reach, actually, set a very good watermark for us and to, to provide incentive to, so that those that are interested in putting the solar panel on their rooftop have, you know, maximum amount of permit fee that they have to worry about. As many of you may know, that many years ago, the city of San Jose spent a lot of money, partnered with some other private companies and, and probably, a pub, public entity to, as a junior, junior college for one, to start a, a training program, you know, for, for the installer, to teach them how to install those solar panel, and hopefully, they'll be able to find a job, and then increase the roof, roof mount in the city of San Jose. But the last time I checked, those profession, those people that went through the training, taking advantage of some of our public money, went through the training, has the highest unemployment rate. You'd probably not be difficult to find out that people are really, really slowing down of adding any roof mount, panel to, to, to their rooftop. So I authored a memo which was trying to hopefully be able to create an incentive, you know, in the name of job growth, economic development, that we all support many, many times at this diocese, and also in the name of reaching the green vision goal for the environmental sustainability and enhanced quality of life for our community. So with this recommendation, we can be the trailblazer showcasing cutting-edge residential and commercial project. As you may know, many of those manufacturing of, of rooftop panels actually based in the city of San Jose. My district will have at least a couple of them. So I, I, I'm not sure that the CNC money, to be honest with you, is the best way to, to provide the incentive, but I think it's a very equitable way because, you know, it has no impact to the general fund, and every council is sitting on top of a pile of CNC money. And if we can put it to the vast use and have a sunset day on December 31st, it would really, really serve the purpose for everybody's interest. So I encourage my colleague here, you know, really consider putting the money where your mouth is. Let's go support some small business, economic development, providing some more job for those people that have already taken the training and, and got their license issued, and also to achieve our green vision goal. I saw our city attorney was, have some eager to kind of...
Yeah, I just have a, a point to make about the CNC tax money. And unfortunately, the CNC tax monies are restricted funds. They only can be used for capital improvements in parks and fire and, and libraries. So it would have to be another source, really something that's more general fund to, to help provide the incentive. You'd have to identify essentially the general fund.
Is there any specific fund, capital fund that would maybe be able to, to use it?
I'm not aware of any. Most capital funds are restricted, and to the extent the monies are limited, what they can be used for. And so that's why typically, anytime there's a subsidy of, you know, supporting the incentive programs, it's, it comes from general fund monies, unless you get some grant monies.
Okay. Except for the traffic, the traffic impact fee, that wasn't a general fund, that was this capital improvement fund.
No, the general, the, the action taken on the traffic impact fees, if you're referring to the North San Jose, those have to come back. The city manager has to come back with a program to help fund those improvements, and both with the loss of redevelopment monies and the incentive. And she's going to have to come back and identify a source of funds. But unless there are traffic monies, and I think they look at regional monies that VTA may have, or other sources, or grant monies, they'll have to be general funds.
Okay. Lack of any capital improvement fund that would be able to use to subsidize, to create this incentive for more rooftop mount solar panels, I, I'd like to make a modification in my memo to, to recommend the city council or to direct the city manager to identify resources so we can subsidize the additional expenses exceeding the SB 1222. And we also, the sunset day will stay at December 31st and 2015. Listen. Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor. Councilmember Oliverio?
Thank you, Mayor Reed, and thank you, city attorney, for answering the question on the CNC tax, on the restriction. I guess I'd like to hear from Joe Horidell on, I mean, I know there's been a lot of movement to make this a more streamlined process, to have solar installations much easier, because it wasn't always about money, it was about time to get it done. And I think that's where the whole Bay Area cities made an improvement. And then maybe for city attorney or mayor or city manager, anytime there's an initiative to, let's say, subsidize something at any point of the year, does that automatically budget process? Or the way we work, if six people just want to allocate some funds for something that can just be done at any time?
Well, the mayor could speak from his perspective. I mean, on any given Tuesday, clearly, you can make changes to your policies and give I mean, on any given Tuesday, clearly you can make changes to your policies and give us direction. I would say from a budgetary perspective, it's better to have the discipline to do budget changes in context of the budget process, in particular where there's not a source that's really apparent, and because it's a matter of trade-offs. And so to Rick's point, you know, the general fund would probably be the likely source for the subsidy, and so, you know, there's a lot of competition for those funds.
And then I saw, Joe, to your comment, I also want to know, I have no realm of understanding of what this might actually be, because I don't know what to anticipate and how many people might seek this, so that's also an unknown variable, so.
So I'll have Chu Chang, our building official, go through and kind of walk through some of the specifics and our estimate of what we think order of magnitude dollars might be, just based on a little bit of past experience.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Chu Chang, building official. First, I'd like to clarify the separation of the fee and the tax. For the last seven years, city does not collect the taxes on solar panel rooftop installation. It's waived until 2014. As the streamlining part, the difference between the residential, commercial, if you see the staff report in there, we look back for the last year, we issued more than 1,500 permits for the rooftop single-family home. About four of the project exceed the $500 state cap. The reason why is that we pretty much streamline everything for the single-family process. To allow the homeowner directly contact us, we are sending inspector down to the job site, do the plan review and the inspection at the one single time. That's the streamlining, the first step we take to helping the small family homeowner. On the commercial and multifamily side, last year, we have issued 14 permits. Out of 14 is in our report, we pretty much exceeding the state mandate of $1,000 almost every project. We probably have two projects stay within the $1,000 limitation. The reason of that is because the complexity of the multifamily or the commercial industrial project, the magnitude and the complexity is getting way complicated, require the plan review from both building and fire in the office, and then send the inspector out to do the inspection both from fire and the building side. That's the area we continue trying to streamline and see how we can help the industry to lower the cost. Very recently, we started even going to with the SolarCity and the different solar provider, streamlining a way they can request doing inspection in a, like, week, one, we designated one day for them to get in like a 50 or 40 application at same day to do the application and doing the inspection, that helping the industry to schedule their time and our staff time to provide the inspection. As the magnitude, you're talking about the area where you see the state mandate of the industrial or commercial. For the 14 project total, you're looking at about, I would say, 60 to 80,000 dollar range for the whole year last year. And that's the magnitude you're looking for if you are like to consider to subsidize that over the state limit. But also like to provide the information, the reason we over that is not only because the complexity of the project, it's also because the inspection time. When the project getting bigger, it's harder for us to estimate how many times of inspection needed or correction we needed, so inspector will need to go back a few times. That's the time why it depends on the size of the project and the complexity of the project require more inspection. And the building fire, we both are the fee-based department, and that's the reason the cost will go over state mandate of $1,000. Thank you.
I'll add a little bit more context to things. One of the things that's a real difference between single-family homes and why we're able to do those really cheaply versus commercial, is the single-family, the way we've written the rules and the way the installers install the panels, they install them flush to the roof, usually about three inches off the roof, so they are physically attached to the roof. Most commercial buildings, they do not attach them to the roof. They weight them down, so they are essentially putting concrete blocks across building roofs that are not designed necessarily for those kinds of loads. Plus, you're adding the panels that are not necessarily flat to the roof but tipped up, so they act more like sails. And so we have to deal not only with electrical issues, structural issues, as well as the potential during high winds of those panels picking up and actually going out into the parking lots. So there are things that we are looking at that, with the commercial buildings, that are much more strenuous than on a small-scale residential project. Unfortunately, the state took a good idea, but then mandated a solution to it without really figuring out how cities go through and deliver these services. To go through and say $1,000 is the magic number without doing any sort of analysis beyond that really puts cities in a tough position. Like we're here today, we're having to defend what those costs are, and I think we have work to drive those costs down, and we continue to do that. But to go through and set a fee with no escalation and say that that is the fee across the state until 2018 does put us in a tight position.
I had a couple of things. One is, the council has previously referred the staff, something to bring back in the budget process, and that's an effort to reduce permitting fees on single-family work or residential work. And it seems to me that incentive on the solar should be part of that. If there's a way to reduce it, then that should be part of that referral. Although, given the numbers that you've cited, we're going to be below the $500 anyway, but if the council wanted to reduce the fees further, I think it would be part of that referral when, when it comes back to us. And if I understand the modified motion is to refer this to staff to identify resources to do it, and that would come back to us in the budget process, so we'd be making a decision in the budget process. If it's 60, $80,000 a year, two years, $160,000. If we have the money, we could, we could choose to do it at that time, based on what Chu Chang has said. So I don't have a problem with the referral to staff, but it is a budget process issue, and it probably will be general fund. And if that's what we want to do, then we'll do that, but we will have to make a choice of something else. So that's the way it works in the budget process. And so it seems to me that the state has picked numbers to drive this discussion. I don't think they're trying to say this is the number that they would charge, because they're not in the business, they don't really know what we're doing here. But it certainly drives the discussion. And, because I remember when the first survey was done of the cost of solar permitting, cities were all over the place, with some have really huge numbers. And our staff has worked very hard to streamline our process to bring our numbers down. It's not that we aren't collecting the fees for the services rendered, it's we figured out a way to do it much more efficiently and effectively, and that's a good thing. And I applaud staff for having brought the numbers down quite a bit from where they were. Councilmember Camus.
Yeah, first, first I want to commend staff of working on reducing costs for, for these small jobs, and I hope that we can look at other small jobs for, for small home remodels, and I think that'll spur economic growth as well. I, I don't believe in subsidies, so I won't be supporting the motions. I don't believe in subsidies for solar projects, because, first of all, they already get a lot of subsidies from the federal and state government. The people who are going to be installing solar roofs on their homes either have to be enticed by the current cost, or they're just not going to do it. Giving them more money, you know, technology takes some time to, to work out and evolve. Look at light bulbs, for example. You know, your, your LED lights, they used to be, you know, a lot more expensive than they are now. Now you can go to Costco and pick them up for, you know, half the cost they were last year. And I think the solar, solar energy can go that direction. But for us to, to take our strapped city and take money away from potential raises for our police and, and the rest of the employees, and put it to people who are, you know, maybe wanting to do a solar project on top of their house, is, you know, you're taking the money in, from, from everybody and giving it to the, you know, slightly better off. So I think that this would not be a wise use of our city's money, so I will not be supporting the motion. And I want to make sure that, that, you know, that I am for solar panels, and I'm happy that you're reducing the fees, so I'm very supportive of your memo. And so I, but, but to add, to give more money to the people who are, you know, who are better off, I think the people who can afford solar panels are usually better off. And we were taken away from, you know, better programs, you know, that the city can run. I think it's money not well spent. So I will not be supporting that motion, and again, I thank you for your work and your department's work on streamlining. I hope that we could streamline a lot of our processes so that we could save money and squeeze efficiencies in that department. Thank you.
Councilmember Liccardo.
Thanks, Mayor. Joe, I know we've talked about this in the past, but looking at page four and the various inspectors that are involved, I know Chu Chang just spoke to this issue about the complexity of these projects, but I know we've talked a little bit about cross-training of inspectors and cross-certifying of inspectors, so that rather than having a separate electrical building and fire inspector going out to the same project, could we have one person who's qualified and certified in all three disciplines, maybe just solely on solar, I don't know, you know, maybe, maybe, given, you know, I understand, you know, reading the entire textbook and memorizing it may not be as easy as being able to know about one set of projects. You know, is it possible we could save a lot of money on our end and, and the customers in this case by simply having a single inspector?
In terms of the cross-training and the cooperation or coordination between the building and the fire, another piece we streamline is the, even this is a multifamily project, right now we categorize as commercial. But because the, some of the panel putting on the multifamily rooftop still can be a simple rooftop project, that's how we streamline putting that whole category into the single-family process. That's in the report, we mentioned, if anything is lower than 15 kilowatt, regardless they are on the multifamily roof or it's on a single-family, we use the same process to process the plan review and the inspection for the solar panel. Why I mention that, because another piece of saving is, because fire does have requirement to do inspection on the multifamily rooftop. We're coordinating with the fire department in way they agree on the multifamily system, which is less than 15 kilowatt, the building inspector will perform that part of work for the fire inspection. That's when we are doing the cross-training, not just within the building, also between the building and the fire, to save the customer. Instead, I'll have one fire inspector and the one building inspector. So we combine that into one for the even multifamily project under 15 kilowatt.
That's great. And I know we've had challenges, given the competition for pay out there and our, our own fiscal issues here. Are we compensating inspectors additionally for that additional certification, or?
We don't, not in this case, sorry.
Oh, I hope, I hope we can think about how we could create strong incentives for inspectors to train in other disciplines financially. Certainly would save us money, I'm sure, in the long run, if we paid somebody a little more simply to have the additional knowledge. I'd certainly be enthusiastic about seeing how we could push forward with that.
Yeah, I'll clarify a little bit, because we do pay more for combination inspections. We haven't added fire as a combination piece that there would be extra paid to. We are in contract negotiations with the inspectors' union right now, and one of the things we've been talking about, are there some ideas around certifications for like project management skills that are other types of specialties that would be beneficial to the city for us to go through and pay differently for?
Great. Thanks, Joe. I, I recognize these issues are complex, but it seems to me a better skill we have of our workforce and...
And I probably violated some sorts of rules there, and I didn't mean to.
Well, it got by the city attorney. I just wanted to commend Councilmember Chu, at least for attempting to identify a source of funds. I know that's hard. It's not easy. But I think we do need to recognize, we would like to have lower fees all across the board. All of us would. And ultimately, it comes down to a budgetary decision. And unless we are magically able to, or not magically able to simply reduce the amount of staff time that's spent on the projects, ultimately, there will be a subsidy if we're going to push fees down. And so, you know, I commend the fact that you recognize that and try to identify a budgetary source. You know, we may have to do that again as we move forward. Thanks.
Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you. So I just wanted to note that we do have, we suspended the collection of the building and structure construction tax with respect to the construction or installation of any solar building, service equipment dating back to 2001. So we do have some incentive here on solar already in place. And I certainly support, you know, encouraging folks to do solar. And I'm really happy that for most of our families who are doing solar, you're staying within the amount that this state law contemplates, so I think that's really good. And I like the fact that you're trying to streamline things, and you've created a process to really help folks get solar in their home. A lot of times when we're asked to do incentives, it's because there's a huge business opportunity for the city, and if we don't do something, we're going to lose it. I mean, we just saw that. We've reduced traffic impact fees, we've got projects in North San Jose, and other places where we had to do something in order to keep, in order to get some business in here. I don't see this room filled with people demanding that we do something about this or they're not going to install solar. It looks like we are getting a lot of solar projects. Is this, are we having people just say, this is outrageous, we're not doing solar in San Jose?
I have not heard that, unlike, like our water heater permits, why we've really worked hard to reduce those. Have not heard that on the solar installs. And I think that's really, as the mayor pointed out, the work we did of all the cities here in the county, to really go back and look at all, you know, the individual pieces and why our fees were what they were. And part of it is we reduced our time, and part of it is we spent a lot of time with the industry. We put together work checklist and guide, so when we do walk out onto a single-family job site, they already have the checklist of what we're going to look for, down to where the stickers go, you know, what needs to be on it, how things are put together. We give them examples of what success looks like, and that allows us to be able to go through and pass most of those when we walk onto the job site. They walk off with an approval. So, you know, it's really getting our staff trained, it's getting our processes really refined, and it's getting the installers really serious about doing a good job on that. And so, you know, that's how you do it.
Yeah, well, I commend you for all that work, because obviously you're going in the right direction, and you're working with the industry, and hopefully we continue to be able to streamline it for larger projects. But multifamily and the types of projects you describe in here are not the same as those single-family homes. And to say that you have one footprint for everything or one, you know, that's, it's not realistic. And there's always going to be outliers, I would guess. You're always going to get something that's got some kind of twist to it where you're not going to be able to, to stay within the $1,000. So I think you're doing a great job, and I believe when it ain't broke, don't fix it. And it doesn't look like it's broken to me right now, so I won't be supporting this.
Councilmember Oliverio.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a substitute motion just to move the staff recommendation, and I'm totally open to Councilmember Chu's initiatives on trying to, to do those things, but it's been brought up, there are other subsidies at other different levels of government, and then as Councilmember Herrera brought up, that, the other exemption. We are dealing here with a lot of commercial installations, and I do believe people that are choosing solar are choosing it for a variety of reasons, but I don't think it comes down to the permit. I respect my colleague that have, if he may have been hearing, that many people have been saying they're, they're not choosing it, but I haven't heard those voices yet. But I think it's important that we move, move ahead, memo item 4.1, and go from there.
All right. We have a substitute motion to move the staff recommendations. Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. I seconded the, the motion made by Councilmember Chu, because I think this is a fruitful discussion. So I do have a question to Rick, or maybe it's to Joe, and, and I might make you say something that you might not want to say or that you can say, but Rick will tell us. What are the restrictions or requirements, if you did want to have a subsidy, that, that would restrict, you know, a property owner based on their, their income levels, you know, to be able to qualify? You know, I, I respect also the comments that Councilmember Camus made, that, yeah, you don't want, you know, the folks that, that are in this industry and know how to, you know, how to maneuver and find ways to, to, you know... you know, how to maneuver and find ways to, to, you know, cut costs, to get, to jump in front of the lines of folks that really might want to do this, but, you know, they're low, they're low earners.
And I'll take a first stab at this from a legal standpoint, and then he can talk about the practical side of it. The, I mean, basically, if, to the extent you're subsidizing any, first of all, can you subsidize low-income folks for any service, including a solar installation? The answer is yes. To the extent you are, it needs to come from a source, a general fund or whatever is available that's, you can legally use, so, so long as it's not restricted. You can't tap other homeowners or others that are in the program to cover the costs of what you're trying to subsidize or incent. So that's why anytime you have a subsidy program, you need to identify eligible funds. In this case, you know, I don't have any off the top of my head, other than general fund, but if there are capital funds or something that were available, or grant funds, you could do that. So that's just the sort of the, the legal basis for it.
Well, the practical piece is that, as you heard from Chu Chang, the, we already treat the 15 kilowatt and smaller systems as a single-family system, so that's the $500 rate. And just from a practical standpoint, I think for somebody to say that they're low-income and they deserve a subsidy from the city to build a 15-kilowatt system on an apartment or commercial building is going to be pretty hard. Most normal systems on your house are three to four kilowatts. So that's a big system that's going up on a rooftop. And then, you know, if they are low-income, they, it's, this is more of a business situation on a, you know, it's an apartment building of four, 10 units, you know, so that's typically not, quote, "a low-income person."
Well, in the staff report, I mean, there is a section in the staff report where you do address single-family residential system fees, and so that's, you know, the, the reality is that, you know, solar and, and new technology is always available first to, you know, higher-income earners. I mean, that's the reality. And if we're sitting here thinking that that, that that's not real, then, then, you know, and so, how, I, I guess what I would like to see, and perhaps the maker of the motion would, would be willing to ask staff to, to start looking at possibilities, and the maker of the motion isn't here, so.
We'll come back.
To start looking at possibility, you know, to, to look at possibilities of how do you make this available? You know, I mean, I know back, way back when, when CDBG was, was robust, there were, there were programs that helped people insulate their homes, that helped them weatherstrip their, their windows, you know, gave them incentives to, to have better water heaters and, you know, and so forth. So, so something along that line. And I guess the maker of the motion is.
Maker of motion, I'm sure, will return shortly. He stepped into the, in a green room, so we can come back to that specific question.
Okay, well, I think he's just coming in.
Okay, Councilmember Oliverio has come back with a drink of water.
I am back with my refreshing water. I'm ready to hear.
Oh, so you weren't paying.
Request for a friendly amendment.
I'll be candid, I was talking to the police officer in the back, so.
Okay. So, no, my, my question was if the maker of the motion would be willing to ask staff to, to, to look at, at future potential funding sources as to how can you make solar much more available in the ways we've done it in the past when we've insulated windows and so forth using CDBG funds? I know CDBG funds are not plentiful now, but even looking at ways to do that and make it available for folks that are lower income or, or lower wage earners. You know, this type of, this type of, of technology, you know, is available, but it's, it's cost prohibitive. And so, so, so I was, you know, asking if you would give further direction to staff.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Campos. I would ask staff, number one, is what Councilmember Campos said, attainable with how you would go about doing work? And do we today offer a sliding scale? So if I'm going to get a certain improvement in my house, do I pay based on income?
No, and so it would be more of a grant-type relationship, and where Councilmember Campos went with the comment, I think, is the appropriate place to either CDBG or Affordable Housing Fund that deals with grants to affordable, or to low-income residents.
So with that in mind, is that something that's attainable with that grant in mind?
Um, I'm, I'm just. I'm happy to give work to someone else, because it really, that, it's not something my department would end up administering. So I really would have to talk with, like, Leslie Corcilla, because she manages CDBG and Affordable Housing.
Well, we do have some referrals to staff already that I think would pick this up, because we know that we won't get to our green vision goals if we don't get very broad use of the technology, and it won't just be the, you know, wealthy or the upper income or even the middle-income people, that'll be enough to get to, to get to the goals. So the items like the property assessment districts and things like that that allow it to be financed more cheaply, and those are things that could be done. We had ARA funding, used to be known as stimulus, ARA funding for a while, because that was available to help do some renovation and energy efficiency stuff. And some of it, I think, was available to do solar. And so that may come again as the federal government tries to incentivize solar, or as the state tries to incentivize solar. So I think a referral to staff to look at those is certainly in, in line with what we're already trying to do, and will be necessary at some point to figure out a way to get this broadly adopted by people across the city.
So thank you for the clarification from both staff and the mayor. So it sounds like then, as we are talking about our green vision goals, and we have ordinance prioritization on lowering the cost of home improvements, things in that manner, then this topic per your desire would, would come up? So yes, I'd be happy to accept that.
That's okay with the second or so, we have a friendly amendment. Were you done, Councilmember Campos? Councilmember Chu?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, the intent of this memo is to find a way for the city to intensify more solar installation to reach our green ambition goal. The, the state has a program, the federal has the program, and I know that San Jose also have a, a, a small program, but the intent of this memo is to have a, a more incentive. Like I stated earlier, I don't know what, what is the right amount, and I want to thank the staff for keep streamlining the, the process so that the permit, permit fee keep going down. And I, I just also wanted to remind my colleague and thousands of people that are watching our city council meeting, that just a few years, weeks ago, we approved millions, millions of dollars to the developers and company like Samsung and Cisco. There, you know, we, we were talking about when Councilmember Camus was talking about where we're striving to, to, to have enough general fund to hire police, and I tell you that would probably, probably have an impact of a 30, 40 police versus one or two CSO officers. So, so with that, I would be happy to withdraw my motion, and I will be supporting this substitute motion. I think that this issue in, in need to be passed by the council today.
Councilmember Herrera.
Yeah, I want to thank Councilmember Chu for bringing forth a memo that's, that sparked the discussion. And the, the other thing I want to say is, I know there are a lot of solar companies out there, we're seeing solar move forward. We did have the ARA program that helped us do some of the, you know, things that help make, make houses more efficient. But I, I think we also need to find out what's available out there now, what kinds of programs are out there that the private sector is offering, other energy companies, just so that we, you know, San Jose works with in partnership with other entities that are already out there, nonprofits that are promoting solar. There's all kinds of things going on. I know in my district, folks got together and started to try to put together a way that they could buy in groups, in group buying, to reduce costs. So there's lots of ways that folks can reduce costs. There's leasing programs versus buying panels, which are a lot easier. So I think, you know, we probably need to understand what we're trying to do here, what, what the state of the solar industry is, because it's changed a lot, and there are a lot more opportunities out there to get into solar at a lower cost. It's, it's been reduced because of the, the ways that, that you're able to purchase it on lease and, and those things. So I, I don't know if, if Environmental Services is still working with that to get the, the word out. I know at one point, they were doing a lot of outreach. So I don't know what we're still doing to educate people on solar and alternative energy, but maybe that's, you know, one department that could, could help us address the outreach and continuing education. I think Ashwini is going to say something about it.
Thank you, Councilmember Herrera. So we are doing, we're actually bringing forward a report on PACE, and that's the Property Assess Clean Energy Financing Programs to TNE next month. And we'll also be bringing an update on energy programs, both on the municipal side as well as the community side. We do outreach more on energy efficiency through the Silicon Valley Energy Watch Program, less so on solar. But we've also applied for a grant on a city energy project, and if we get that, then that would include some outreach on energy efficiency as well as solar.
So I guess I would just, to the maker of the motion, I'd just like to include, you know, contemplating what Environmental Services is doing and make sure that we're not duplicating anything, kind of working together with incentives that might be there as we're looking at supporting expansion of solar.
That was fine, that was assumed.
Councilmember Camus.
I just had a question. Are we, are we, in the motion, are we actually asking to do more subsidies for solar? I mean, I just, I want to know what I'm asking the staff to do.
The motion on the floor is the staff memorandum, A, B, and C. And then, the friendly amendment was to refer to staff to look at sources to help low-income people be able to get solar installations, to look at sources of funding, because we know we need eventually to spread this broadly. I believe that, that's the motion I've correctly stated.
Okay, I, I also want to offer up that I actually have about, you know, two companies a month knock on my door asking to install solar for free. So, I mean, it, it is available to people if they want it. I think the fact is that there's so many incentives out there, if the, if your utility bill justifies that you put solar on there, that you, you go, you know, you, you do it. If your bill is more than $300 a month, it makes sense. If it's less than $200 a month, it doesn't make sense. I've actually, I've actually done the work on this at my own house, and like I said, I have at least two companies a month knocking on my door asking to, to put solar on my house, and I think it happens throughout the city. What I will say is, what we found in my own house is that the, the insulation on the roof and the, the windows and the better water heaters and the better efficiency dishwashers make a lot more sense than the solar, solar panels on your, on your roof. And I'd, I'd rather see the low-income families get more bang for their buck than subsidizing solar panels. So I, again, if that's going to be in there, I'm not going to vote for it, so thank you.
All right, on the motion, I think we are done with the discussion on that motion. All in favor? Opposed? Yet one opposed. Councilmember Camus opposed, motion carries. Our last item on the agenda would be item 7.1, agreement with Brown and Caldwell for the digester and thickener facilities project at the regional wastewater facility. Councilmember Richan.
Is there a presentation?
No PowerPoint, just a few verbal points I'll start off with, and then we'll be available for questions. So good afternoon, Ashwini Kantak, Assistant Director of ESD, and I'm joined by Julia Nguyen, Division Manager of ESD. Today, we are asking for council approval of a consultant agreement with Brown and Caldwell to provide engineering services for the digester and thickener facilities upgrade project at the San Jose-Santa Clara Regional Wastewater Facility. The agreement term would be through December 31st, 2019, and it's for a total amount not to exceed $12,017,526. Given the complexity and the magnitude of the systems being rehabbed, the base services do include substantial support services through construction, startup, and commissioning, so it's not just for design services. And then, of the $12 million, about $2.2 million is also for optional services. The scope of this project, this is the first phase of a much-needed upgrade to the digester and thickener facilities. And this particular project will rehab four digestors, including new covers and mixing systems, and upgrades to the heating, gas collection, and conveyance systems, also includes structural and seismic retrofits, upgrades of control systems, and upgrades to the thickening facilities, that'll also include new odor control treatment. And so these refurbished digestors are expected to result in much improved digester gas production, and to also bring the gas conveyance system into compliance with current fire and electrical codes. And just in terms of the criticality of this project, we, we have 16 digestors. We generally need eight to 10 of them. Right now, six are not operational, so it is pretty critical to move forward with this project at this time. I, I wanted to spend a few minutes on the outreach and the procurement for this project. So we started out with an industry-wide outreach event in November of 2012, and this was related to procurements for a lot of the projects at the facility. This was attended by over 100 people. And then, for this particular project, we advertised a solicitation for proposals in February, and then conducted a pre-proposal conference, which was attended by about 30 people, including representatives from nine major consulting companies. We did, however, receive only one proposal, which was from Brown and Caldwell. And so we did a lot of follow-up on this. We could, there's probably a few reasons to explain this. One is the, the type of project that is in question. The number of firms with expertise in this area is very limited, and many other wastewater facilities are also doing similar projects that are either underway or will be. We also had a major procurement out, which was Program Management Services, so some firms made a business decision to go after that one and not after this particular one. We have other procurements that will be coming up as well. So in terms of timing, we can't really keep waiting for one to be completed to go into the other. So basically, it was, there was no issues with the RFQ. We did follow-up with all of the major firms that had attended the pre-proposal conference, and it really was business decision for those firms. We found out that SFPUC also recently did a solicitation for a similar project, but actually a much larger scope, and only received one proposal. So it, it is a pretty limited field in terms of people with expertise. And so Brown and Caldwell is nationally recognized for their expertise and experience in anaerobic digestion and biosolids processing. As part of their proposal, they presented the city with many projects that were similar in size and scope to what we are envisioning, and proved their extensive design experience in this area. We went through an extensive negotiation process over several months, and our design fees, which are at about 19%, are well within the range of design fees for other similar projects that we benchmark, which were found to be between 16 and 25%. We talked with other agencies that have been or are currently clients of Brown and Caldwell and received very positive feedback. We also conducted internet searches, did not come across anything significant. And so based on our negotiations, our benchmarking research, and the reference checks we've conducted, we would like to recommend council approval of this consultant contract, and we are available for any further questions. Thank you.
I would like to add that there's a, a letter to the mayor and city council, which I signed on behalf of the Treatment Plant Advisory Committee, which considered this item with our tributaries in Santa Clara and Milpitas as part of T-PAC, and Councilmember Chu, and Vice Mayor Nguyen, and Ed Chikata, and I sit on the T-PAC, and I think that's, all of us who are in the room that are on T-PAC, recommending that we approve the staff recommendation after we had a, a pretty good discussion at the T-PAC meeting. So that recommendation is in, if you don't have it, in your packet. Councilmember, we have a motion to approve from Councilmember Chu, Councilmember Richan.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate the time that your staff took to talk to my staff about some questions that we had, and you touched on a number of them just right here, and also, there's a few references in the staff report about the fact. few references in the staff report about the fact that we only had one proposer. You listed in two different places, there's the 100 at the initial group that you had, where you talked with consultants, and then another one with 30, and yet we still only had one proposer, and you talked about some of the reasons why, and that was the reason for some of our calls to your department, trying to get a better sense of that. We also asked a question about staggering those two projects, that you could have a number of those firms that were only allowed, I guess, to bid on one of the contracts, and why we would have restricted it such that, regardless of timing and the need, I mean, this need has been going on for some time. This didn't just happen, so I'm assuming we knew the need was there. But in the interest of having a competitive bidding process and serving the ratepayers, precluding other firms from choosing one or the other to bid on, and maybe in some case, potentially having a contract award that's maybe higher, given there's no competitive process, why we wouldn't have approached it a little differently?
So, the preclusion is very much because of the functions that will be provided. So, for this particular project, it's really design services and support through the construction of the project. The program management services, we would actually rely on people provided through that contract to provide constructability reviews and third-party reviews. So, you really can't have the same firm, even if they had a firewall, we didn't feel like there was enough, there was enough of a conflict of interest that we really could not have the same people bidding on both.
That assumes that the same company got it, though, right?
I'm sorry?
Does that assume that the same company would have been awarded both? Or do you mean just bidding on one was a conflict?
Well, it takes a significant amount of resources to put the proposals together. So, most companies want to know if there's a potential conflict of interest, and they're, you know, they're not going to be awarded, they won't really go in and make the proposal, spend the time and resources.
Did you reach out to any of the firms that did not receive the award, and the one that was a few weeks ago, and see if they would have had an interest in submitting if there had been staggered and that restriction had been placed in it?
Not since, not since the award of the program management firm, but the other reason was also, so this was a project that was identified as being very critical, so electrical systems and digesters were identified as being critical in a report that was actually done as far back as 2007, because there were significant costs. We had to get the rate strategy in place to actually come up with some of that funding. And as I mentioned, a lot of the digesters are down right now, and each procurement takes, a complex procurement takes six to eight months, so we couldn't really wait to be done with the program management one, to then start the digester one. It was already in the approved CIP budget. The need is critical, and so we made the decision to move ahead.
So, you used conflict of interest term, and that, to me, and I see the reference here in the staff report, that one sentence, given that Brown and Caldwell had been involved in the preparation of the condition assessment and technology evaluation, which was included as part of the RFQ, and I understand the city attorney's office was consulted on this, and there, we don't see a conflict of interest there. That, it's, I mean, that in itself is troubling, given our past history with some of these issues, when we've had the firm be involved in the scoping of an RFP or an RFQ or any of these. It's concerning.
Yes.
And maybe another firm saw that and said, "It's in the bag," so to speak. I mean, I'm just speculating here, but just reading this, I'm at a loss as to how we could have come to that conclusion that there's no conflict of interest here.
So, the report that Brown and Caldwell provided was as a subconsultant and part of a much larger master plan process. The report that they had provided was made public as part of the RFQ. Everybody could see what the recommendations were. And actually, since then, so many conditions have changed that what we were putting forward was not exactly what the report had recommended. We took some of the recommendations, but it was very much an independent evaluation of what we wanted to go forward with. So, we did have extensive conversation about this with the city attorney's office, and looking at all of those facts, they felt like it was fine to proceed.
Okay. And I think you might have touched on this when I was looking through my notes when you were doing your presentation. The 19.5% of the consultant agreement compared to the construction cost, that's standard industry, and we're comfortable with that range. My experience is more of a 10% to 15% more on the lower end, which you would hope for, and this, we're bumping up on 20% of the cost of a project would be the consultant agreement.
Yes. So, for similar projects that we benchmark, so this is a pretty complex system, and so for similar projects that we benchmark at a lot of other wastewater facilities, it was anywhere between 16% and 25%.
That's the number I heard you use. Okay. That's, all right, but I guess these are complex. I think the last question I had, and this, I believe, was recommended from T-PAC, the last item, which was the additional authority for the $2.2 million, a little bit over, was recommended that it be, the authority not given to extend beyond or to include that? Remember, you served me correctly? Was that a different?
No, that was for the program management services contract, and it was really for the options.
Okay. Well, this is, what's the term we're using here?
So, the $2.2 million is for optional services?
Optional services, yeah.
So, if we need additional services through the course, it's a long-term agreement, and if things come up where we feel like we need additional services from them, then we would authorize those. And if we don't use them, then they just, you know, they don't get used through the system.
Yeah, which is what I was going to ask for a little more explanation. Is this during the construction project, or are these post-construction about additional services that we'd be asking for?
Through the term of the agreement, so through design, construction, post-construction, all of it. So, if we felt like we needed some additional wiring diagrams, or we, you know, we needed additional analysis done on something that we hadn't anticipated, because the agreement that you have before you, we've gone through a very detailed level of effort scoping, and so really identified exactly what we think we need. So, if there's things that come up that we didn't anticipate, it allows us that flexibility.
This is almost a fifth of the cost. It seems a bit high for optional items, to me.
Yeah, go ahead. Mariana?
Just to clarify, Mariana Chavez, one of the senior engineers with the city, so I work with the consultant preparing the scope. So, the optional services is a significant amount. They are all design services that may or may not be required, so they will be known as we go ahead with the project. So, as we make decisions, there will be services for designing additional elements. There is also a contingency that we have in case that there are major design changes that we need to allow for. There is also a significant component for programming and controls, so that may or may not be required, depending on the situation of the city at that time. So, we're just having the flexibility to have the option to exercise these services if we need to, but they may not happen. So, we will know as we go ahead with the design, it's just to have the flexibility and to have the capability to do this if we need to.
Okay. Thank you very much. Those were the questions I had. I'm reluctantly going to support the recommendation. I have to admit, though, that in some instances like this, I would have hoped the staff might have taken the extra time to rebid this, so to speak. I understand timing's an issue, I understand resources is an issue, I understand cost is an issue, but, you know, these $12 million of ratepayer fees, so to speak, and, you know, to have just one bidder and also that bidder involved in scoping out some of the work in the initial phase of this is just really, leaves me a little bit uncomfortable about the recommended action. So, I appreciate all the time you spent answering the questions in today as well. Thank you.
Mr. Locardo?
I appreciate Councilmember Rocha's inquiry. It's a bit of an unusual contract. I guess the question would be, what would be the consequence of us authorizing the roughly $9.8 million and requiring that, for any optional service, that this come back to council? Would that disrupt any schedule? You know, what would the impact be?
Yes, there, Julia Nguyen, Division Manager, there would be a significant impact as we go through the conceptual design stage. A lot of the early decisions will help us inform whether we need the additional design services. Most notably is whether we upgrade our heat exchangers or not. Right now, our digesters are unevenly heated, and we're looking at two different operating scenarios for the digesters. If it turns out that we're able to accommodate either or scenario, there may be design, additional design elements that need to be incorporated. It would put a break into the project's schedule as well as construction, if we had to go back.
I guess.
It is as needed and at the city's discretion, and so staff would only be moving forward with that if we felt strongly that the services were needed.
I understand that. I guess the question is, in the contract, does it specify, or would it specify, that the option, or the optional services would only apply, for instance, to a specific set of services that would be clearly identified, where there are decision points throughout the process, where we can clearly understand, okay, money is not going to be spent on this because we've carved a different path in the decision tree. What I'm concerned about is this sort of an open-ended optional services line, and I'm trying to understand what the line item looks like in a contractual sense.
So, in the agreement? Hi. In the agreement that I think you have attached, Task Aid is the optional design services, and it does call out in detail what those would be.
Okay. Forgive me, I only have a seven-page report, so it's in the, I'm guessing it's online?
Yeah.
It's, I have a copy here if you want to see it. Task Aid, I can confirm that Task Aid specifies what those tasks would be, and they only can be done with the written authorization of the ESD director.
Okay.
So, clearly, there's no authority to move beyond without specific written authorization.
Okay. I just want to make sure there's no risk of scope creep here, because I understand, you know, when there are relationships, you know, with consultants, and they last a long period of time, and there's a relationship to trust, and everybody's getting along fine, I want to make sure that it doesn't become a case in which we're suddenly expanding to a scope beyond whatever the council or the city manager believes today we're going to get. I'm sorry, Carrie, did you want to speak?
I did, thanks. Carrie Romano, Director of Environmental Services. You know, one of the documents that I'd like to point out, where we provide regular progress reports, is the semi-annual CIP report. So, that document, which we had the opportunity to share at TNE yesterday, is updated every six months, and that's where we really provide an overview of how each project is moving along in the capital program, and that's where we're talking about any changes and adjustments we've made. If there's particular interest in this project, we can call it out as a separate item outside of the CIP report and provide some information on any additional changes, but we are looking to move very aggressively on our capital program. We certainly are interested in providing the best value to the ratepayers, and we would like to spend more money on doing projects and less money on some of the procurement and administrative processes, but this is a large-value contract, and so if there's additional reporting outside of the CIP report that would provide additional transparency for you, we're happy to do that.
Thanks, Carrie. I appreciate the offer. I'm not actually interested in creating more work in terms of reporting. I get the fact that you guys are coming in every quarter and telling us exactly what you're doing, because my concern is, you know, today, when we authorize this, and what we remember we voted on four years from now is, you know, we recognize there's going to be a gap. And so, anyway, thank you. I appreciate it.
We're hopeful we're going to talk about this often enough that there's not going to be that, the loss of that legacy knowledge.
Right. Thanks, Carrie.
If I could add, Mr. Mayor?
Ed Chikata?
Councilmember Locardo, members of the council, perhaps just to tie this to prior discussion on the program management consultant, as Ashwini pointed out, this is something of the multiple layers of oversight that does help ensure that the scope is delivered within the budget and has been fully vetted along the way. A couple of things, as Ashwini, or actually someone noted, there's a legal document, it's typically not the level of detail, perhaps that is printed out hard copy, but attached to your agenda, there is the consultant agreement itself, and you can see the level of detail and the very specific tasks that are outlined as a part of the consulting agreement. I think what Julie was pointing out is that in the course of the work, there is a very high likelihood that they won't know that perhaps additional testing is necessary until they're very deeply into the design work, and at that point, it would be a critical path item that would impact schedule if we needed to come back to council to seek additional authorization. So, it's really been quite a bit of vetting, both in recognizing the sole proposer, a little distinct from a bidder, recognizing it's a qualification-based selection, but nonetheless, has been quite a bit of vetting in getting to this point, both among staff with the, with T-PAC, with the Technical Advisory Committee to T-PAC, as well as ultimately we'll be on the delivery side with staff and the program management consultants. Thank you.
Councilmember Chu?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank Councilmember Rocha and Locardo for raising those questions, and that's why I always advocate for a citywide consultant organization chart, and it could be very complicated, you know, multi-level of consultant that the city hired to keep the daily operation going, and the total amount of the consulting fee that we pay each year could be very surprising. I'm still looking for a citywide consultant organization chart.
We have a couple of reps to speak. I'd like to take that testimony now. Grace Chow, and then David Wall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the member of the council, for this opportunity to come before you and speak to you this afternoon. My name is Grace Chow. I'm a vice president of Brown Caldwell and also the principal in charge of the digester design team. And I want to just give you a short introduction about Brown Caldwell. Brown Caldwell is an employee-owned environmental engineering firm, and we specialize in water and wastewater engineering projects. And we were founded in San Francisco in 1947, and since then, we now have more than 1,400 employees in 55 offices across the country. We have a very, very long history with the city of San Jose. One of the first projects that we worked for you on was in the early 1950s. In fact, we designed the original wastewater treatment plant. So, really pleased and honored to have this opportunity to continue this long-working relationship with you folks on this very, very important project. So, just want to come and say that to you folks. Thank you.
David Wall?
Sir, you will recall that you are the chairman of the Treatment Plant Advisory Committee and have been so for a few years. There was an element of another engineering firm that stood forth for digester rehabilitation. You accepted their contractual agreement at T-PAC. You then put it forth to council. They bid into it, but whatever happened to BLP Engineering? All the money that was spent on that firm, a few memos, a few speeches from me, they just, they're gone into the ether. So, today, we hear commentary of your reliance on the next plan and your knowledge, your purported knowledge of what you're voting on, is what citizens should rely on, specifically me, who knows about these issues. But this report is substandard in its specifications. For one, you don't even know what type of energy system you're going to have at the plant, either gas turbine or gas diesels. Right now, you're on the verge of complete energy collapse, and you're looking at emergency diesel generators for plants. But this goes to the issue of the gas holder and the gas conveyor system and the purity of the gas, all right? I mean, is the gas that's going to be presented or designed going to be able to fuel the fuel cell that you foolishly allowed to be built out there? That takes a high degree of natural gas to keep that thing going. Gas turbine engines also require a higher degree of gas. So, until you focus on what type of gas-holding devices and gas conveyance systems, gas purification systems, that you can draw from Newby Island, for example, the word boondoggle barely describes what you're entering into. But once again, I raise the issue, you're all condemned because of Section 411.1 of the city charter that allows political appointments of people who have no idea what they're doing to make these decisions that you vote on. Thank you.
That concludes the public testimony on this item. We have a motion to approve the staff recommendation. On the motion, all in favor? On the motion, all in favor, opposed, none opposed, motion is approved. That was the last item of business on the agenda. Open forum is next. Mr. Wall.
First, sir, I want to thank you publicly, and also the director of transportation publicly, for your efforts, sir, in fire, fire prevention. Some months ago, I stood before you and told you I couldn't take care of palm debris on a hillside next to a lot by my house. You reacted, sir, and I am reporting gratefully to you, sir, that the fire danger has been significantly reduced. It's almost, of course, it's not eliminated, but it's seriously reduced due to your efforts and that of DOT. I'm very grateful. I do also want to start saying that I think it's time for this council to start planning for the water pollution control plant to fail, and what you're going to do to either pre-position rowboats and/or heavy equipment to dig trenches for direct discharge into San Francisco Bay. It is apparent to me that there is just no concept of this council of what's going on in that department, and the level of deterioration is such that they're focusing on digesters when process air compressors could go at any time, and when that happens, you lose process control period. Or if your engines go down at any time and you have no power. So, sir, there's a lot of disjoint thinking that's going on, and that department has been done for years, and I assert that it is a direct approximate cause of Section 411.1 of the city charter that allows the appointing authority to point in political appointees who don't know their rear ends from a hole in the ground. Other than that, I wish you all a good day.
Russi Nourino.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I was not able to speak on a particular item which I'm interested in, and that was on the ceremonial items. And it talks about walking to school, and it talks about biking to school, but it doesn't say anything about walking to school in pairs. That should be brought home. I'm sure it is. The teachers tell kids as much as possible, walk in pairs. Also bicycles. I saw one kid, I think it must have been ten or eleven years old, she had a safety belt, vest on. And that's rare that you see that in this city, people riding on bikes and so on and wearing safety belts, safety vests, excuse me. But nonetheless, I'd like to ask Sam Locardo, one of the council people, do you wear a safety vest? You don't have to answer if you don't want to. It's not, you do not. I'd urge you to get one. They're not very expensive, they're about nine dollars. Now, I realize a lot of families cannot afford this, but somehow or another, if we could start a program in this city to where every kid wears a safety vest, whether they're on bikes or walking, that's important. Now, another thing which I was going to speak on in this particular item, which I see that it was deferred, 4.3, an ordinance of implementing city code building. I served on the jury here in Santa Clara. When I got out of the jury room, the judge gave us ten minutes, the rest, and I notice as, oh, my time's almost up, and I think I'll save this particular subject because it is so important that I'll think I'll bring it up another time. Maybe I'll bring it up on the, on the fifth of November, as it is slated to be presented then. And if it's not slated to be presented then, then I'll speak on it anyway. Thank you.
Jim Piazza.
Mr. Rocha, you were exactly right. You hit it out of the ballpark today. Again, I applaud you. Again, it's a conflict of interest. And by the way, Mayor Reed and all the council, I'm going to give you guys again, just a little warning, okay? Because again, I've given, just take two words, environmental justice. I'm going to repeat those two words again, environmental justice, accumulative impact. You guys know what I'm talking about. Again, enough, this TCE is ridiculous. There's nine schools under five miles from, again, the massive TCE. And you know what I found out? Go, go figure. Fairchild was dumping the same stuff. They dumped it over there in Santa Teresa-Bernal, and they dumped it in Nine Par. By the way, you guys got some lovely pictures, because you guys had an investigation on this, again, twenty years ago. I do not think you guys should be drinking that Kool-Aid. It has something to do with your memory.
That concludes the open forum. Concludes our meeting. We're adjourned.